Of April fifteenth, twenty twenty five, all rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, this is a regularly scheduled meeting pursuant to the resolution adopted on January twenty first, twenty twenty five, with a meeting notice sent to the Hunterdon County Democrat on January twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. A copy of the agenda for this meeting was posted to the township website on April eleventh, twenty twenty five, posted on the bulletin board and filed in the clerk's office on April eleventh, twenty twenty five. Ms. Emily Dedwiler.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Kohat. Mayor Dante DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Jamal Kadri.
Here.
Township Committee Member Al Nardi.
Here.
Mr. Richard Catonachi.
Here.
Ms. Candace Wiggum.
Here.
Mr. Michael McGovern.
Here.
Ms. Maria Teresi.
Here.
Ms. Beth Hussein.
Here.
Mr. Lance Lothen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sharon Dragan.
Here.
Esquire. Engineer Robert O'Brien.
Here.
And Planner James Kyle.
Here.
And let the record reflect that Kristin Attenasia is also here.
Under review of agenda, I think the agenda is accurate as we're looking at it. For anyone in the audience, we will not be hearing the Jersey Power Sports LLC tonight. They're, it's likely to be continued until next month at this point. When we get to it, we'll, we'll address the date, but I just want to let everyone know that. So that's that in the agenda unless there's anything else. Next up is vote for the public hearing of the housing element and fair share plan to occur on May twentieth, so this is part of the master plan amendment related to the affordable housing. And we're just letting everyone know that we will be addressing that on May twentieth, twenty twenty five. Is there anything else I should be adding to that? Are we good? Good on that one? Any questions? Okay.
Is there a vote?
Do we need to vote for that?
No, Sharon, do we need to vote?
No, you can just, you know, announce that it'll be on the agenda for April, um, May, May twentieth, right? Is that our next meeting? Yes.
You confirm that? Yep.
And I believe the board does not have the plan yet, still being worked on, but you'll get it. That was what I understand, and it'll be here ten days before the meeting, and there'll be public notice.
Yep.
And the plan will be available to the public at that point.
Yeah, and it will be the clerk's office. They'll believe so. Yeah. And the public notice includes all the newspapers and everything. Yep, okay. So we're good on that one? Um, citizens privileged to sit on items not on the agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor? Any objections? Open to the public for items not on the agenda. Going once.
Yeah, I got one question for you.
Please come up, state your name.
I don't know even though it's the right place.
Yeah, come up to this microphone here.
Okay.
So that you can be heard. State your name.
My name is Leslie Richard Parsons. I live on Snyder County Road.
Okay.
Uh, my daughter lives on Lindell Road, and she has two young children, very young toddler and a ten-year-old. And I was wondering if we could get, somehow get the speed limit lowered and maybe put some speed bumps in on that road. People go way too fast.
From your mouth to God's ears.
Wrong place?
No, no, I'm sorry. Was that? No, he says to go to the township committee. Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to be, I like.
If you want to give me some more information on the mayor afterwards or send an email, we're looking at traffic calming right now in the village. If there are other places, if you let us know, we'll take.
They go at least forty-five, fifty miles an hour, two hundred.
I understand, yeah. We're in our favor of speeding for residents, so thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Frida Ralph?
Yeah, Frida Ralph, Lindell Road. I just wanted to say something in response to that, and I do live on Lindell Road, and I'm not a horse person. Years ago, I went from Mountain Road to Rockton Road or somewhere, and there was a sign up saying twenty-five when horses are present, and I'm thinking, why not when children are present?
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay. May I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we're closed to the public. Next item on the agenda, we have resolutions for approval. The first is VB Resolution twenty twenty five dash six. This is memorializing the UAW decision, and myself, Dante, and Al will not be voting on that, but I don't think we need to leave just for the memorialization. Is that correct? Yeah. So, um, someone else?
Are we going to do minutes first?
Don't forget minutes.
Oh, did I, did I skip over minutes?
Yes.
I was, I went out of order. Okay, we'll do minutes first. Apologies. Next up on the agenda, minutes from December sixteenth, twenty twenty four, and just, and January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty five. I'll note that we are still carrying October twenty-first, November eighteenth, and March eighteenth. So we got two down, three more to go, and then we'll have four more. May I? So Kristin, do you know who votes on each one of these? Are you ready for that? Should I call these individually?
I have a couple of points.
Okay, go ahead.
So on the December sixteenth minutes, on resolutions, there were two places that referenced that Al and I would have to.
Yeah.
Recuse ourselves because of the type of application. I believe that the language was put in was that we abstained.
Okay.
And I think technically we should say recuse, just so there's no confusion that somehow we were participating and abstained. So.
Okay.
There were two in the, I think it's section ten resolutions.
Okay.
If those could be changed to recuse, I think they would be appropriate.
Okay. We can make, that's on December sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so we can make that change.
Emily, should we be so referenced too?
On December sixteenth, I believe we were also, we have recused ourselves as well, but I don't think we were even in the room, so I guess all of us should be referenced that way, right? So you, because this was the UAW vote, that all of us, that when I say all of us, Candace, myself, Al and Dante statutorily are not involved, and Candace and I have recused ourselves for other reasons. So I think we need to all, I think the minutes need to reflect that clearly, that all four of us recused ourselves.
Okay.
So we will make that change. Thank you, Candace. Thank you, Dante. Any others?
So I'd, I'd move it with, with those changes.
With those two, okay. So with those changes, you have a motion to approve those minutes?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a second? No, you can approve the minutes. This is for the minutes. This is not for the resolution itself. No, we're back to the minutes. Sorry, I confused you. Yeah, so may I have a motion to approve December sixteenth, twenty twenty four minutes? I have one, a motion from Dante. May I have a second? All in favor? Do you want to check who needed to vote on those? I'm not sure we have that right.
Yeah, you should call.
Yeah, we should call it all.
Okay.
Just for clarity.
Mayor DePiero.
Yes.
Town, uh, Township Committee Member Nardi.
Sure, yes.
Mr. Kadri.
Yes.
Ms. Wiggum.
Yes.
Mr. McGovern.
Yes.
Mr. Catonachi.
Yes.
Um, Chairperson Dedwiler.
Yes.
Okay.
Does everyone?
And it passes.
So the motion is passed. Does it say adopt? Okay, I just wanted to get a read. Okay, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty five meeting, minutes. May I have a motion to approve if everyone's had a chance to read those? May I have a motion?
I'll move.
You'll move? Dante, any second?
I second.
I'll second.
Yeah, let me keep that straight. Yeah, you'll second. All in favor? Bye. Um, so do we need, let's get a roll call on that one, too.
Okay. Mr. Kadri.
Yes.
Ms. Wiggum.
Yes.
Mr. McGovern.
Yes.
Ms. Teresi.
Yes.
Township Committee Member Nardi.
I'm going to abstain. I couldn't find those minutes on the drive.
Mayor DePiero.
Yes.
Chairperson Dedwiler.
Yes.
Thank you. That's everyone. Thank you.
Motion is passed. Okay. Now to resolutions. Resolution for approval, VB twenty twenty five, um, six. This is the UAW matter. Myself, Al, Dante, and Wiggum abstained from that resolution, so.
Recused from that.
We had recused, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Recused.
All right.
Do you want to call for a motion, please?
Someone want to move those, uh, rest, that resolution?
The only two people who voted on that, um, who are present would be Mr. Kadri and Mr. Catonachi.
Okay, they can vote on it. We have a majority here, and the people who are left can vote, so. Somebody want to move the resolution?
One of you two. Move that you approve the resolution.
Is there a second? Okay.
Wonderful.
Roll for the two of them.
Mr. Kadri.
Yes.
Mr. Catonachi. Thank you.
Okay, VB Resolution twenty twenty five dash seven. This is designation of a second official township newspaper. This is a requirement, and I forgot, I accidentally went back and looked at this resolution. What newspaper did we end up with?
Uh, The Ledger and The Trenton.
Okay. I was looking at it, and I don't know. May I, may I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Dante, may I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Ladies first.
Always helpful. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain from that one because I did not actually read that resolution.
Okay.
It adopted without me, so that's good. That's it. Okay, now we're on to min, invoices. Has everyone had a chance to look at the invoices? Yes. Any questions? May I have a motion to approve these invoices, A, B, C, D, and E?
Make a motion.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, these invoices are approved.
Catonachi.
Catonachi.
Motion, second.
Thank you.
Okay, she's just. That's all good. Okay. Ordinances, so I moved this up in the agenda. I want to have a quick conversation. As I understand it, a couple residents who've gone to the township committee asking about a cottage food ordinance for this township, and I understand there was this conversation which I listened to last month. I was not here to, you know, have East Amwell adopt a cottage food ordinance. I wanted to give an update and get some, some feedback, get some guidance from this board. So if you recall, last month, there was, the conversation was, let's, let's have a look at what Lambertville did, and full disclosure, I also went and looked to see what Somerville did for some specific reasons. And what Sharon noted and what I noted is that specifically Lambertville has, has sort of, um, they require cottage food operators, if you will, to get, to get a license, to get, to get a permit from the Board of Health in the city of Lambertville, and then additionally, they, looks like they also allow them, require them to get a zoning permit. So they made some changes to their, to, so they basically regulate cottage food operations. I'll be honest here, Sharon, because some of my notes are out. They basically, um, regulate, if you will, cottage food operations as a, as a type of home occupation. So you look to the home occupation, you look to the conditions of the home occupation. Are those sufficient? Do we need any more? Are those too many? If not, you just, you know, that, that sort of covers that part of it. And then the question is, do you go to, do we need something with the Board of Health? And do we want to quit, you know, process in for a zoning permit? So I wanted to address those three things, get feedback on those three things from this, from this body. As it relates to the Board of Health, I reached out to our Board of Health Chair, Mrs. Tracy Carluccio, who, I was surprised to find out that we actually, that a couple of years ago, our Board of Health actually adopted, um, some regulations specifically to cover cottage food operations. And it has to do with, you know, basically what they basically said is you need to get a permit through the Board of Health, that there's a, for the East Amwell Board of Health, there is a, a fee. I think it's going to be like two hundred fifty dollars. And that permit, not just an administrative thing, it also means that the Hunterdon County Board of Health, and I don't know how this works together, but Tracy was explaining it, and she was, I asked her if she was able to comment. It was sort of last minute. But the Hunterdon County Board of Health then has the ability to inspect this, the, the cottage food, not at the cottage food operator's house, they will not do that, but in a public place. So if they go to Clausen Park or a fair or something, then they can go and they can say, you know, does this meet the requirements? Do you have everything? So that's, that's covered. There's a small gap in that, in that a cottage food operator can sell directly to neighbor, you know, to you, you know, can sell from their house, people can pick them up, and then they can sell at these public places like fairs and whatnot. And the East Amwell Board of Health regulations do not specifically cover sales that are not in a public place. So I've asked Tracy about that. I said, is that a gap we need to cover? Is that something we need to be concerned about? And she said that she would speak to her, the Board of Health attorney, and get back to us, and, and, you know, we can figure out whether we need to cover that. So I think, or whether they can change, they need to, they can amend their laws, and it has to do with their laws. They get their statutory rights from the state, and the state has the right to establish, to license like food trucks and this is related, so getting a little bit out of my comfort zone here.
Emily?
Yeah.
I noticed that in the minor home occupations from Lambertville, it said you couldn't sell from your house. And that was one of the things I was concerned about.
Yeah, so I wanted to talk about that. Yeah. I want to talk separately about sort of our conditions, right? So with the conditions of the home occupation. So maybe we won't allow it at all, so it's a very good point. But regardless, assuming for a second that we will, that we need to go back and sort that out with the Board of Health. So that's part one. Then part two, as I was looking at the Board of Health, as I was looking at our ordinances, specifically our current home occupation ordinance, there's a limitation that you can't do any, you can't, in, in Sowland Mountain, you can't have a home occupation that would use more water than a resident would typically use. So I had a conversation with Tracy about that. I will say that, I will represent that she didn't seem particularly concerned that these are limited, these operations are typically limited in scope, but it's a conversation we can have, we can have at the Board of Health, we can have here, whether that we want to be aware of them, you know. Her point of view is, don't, it's, we want to be looking for a solution in life, you know, we don't want to look for a problem, you know, for a solution. And, you know, for the most part, she, she's, you know, most of the septic systems in the area, and again, I'm speaking on her, you know, I'm kind of paraphrasing, so I think we can get her officially to weigh in on this, but that most of the systems have extra capacity, and maybe we may, may want to consider just a way of, of having a heads up when something like that's going in. So instead of like putting a separate cert, permit in for this, or putting a whole inspection process, perhaps this goes under zoning and it's just, there's a small sort of, she says, maybe not even an occupation, maybe it's just a registration. So we know where these are happening. So that's, that was the Board of Health conversation I had. So a lot of information there, but I wanted to get, I wanted to bring everyone up to speed on that. From my point of view, I wanted to hear, you know, what, what, what you were thinking about this specifically, certainly else you want to hear from the Board of Health. Next month, meeting for the Board of Health is next month, or next week on Tuesday, so you're welcome to attend. I can ask her, you know, Tracy, if she's able to come next month. But in the meantime, I just wanted to hear from you guys on that one. If there's any comments, concerns, should we be worrying about this more or less? Go ahead.
Does our Board of Health here at East Amwell Township, do they do an inspection of the home? You know, is, is, say the business goes in there?
Yeah.
Is there an annual inspection that takes place, is even so, you know, healthy?
So I believe from the New Jersey statute, an annual inspection is not required, maybe not even allowed, I don't want to go that far. There is in most of the municipal ordinances that I saw that related to cottage food operations that by getting a license from the, from the municipality, they, people agree to allow an inspection upon request, but I don't see any, I know that the New Jersey statute specifically says a, a home inspection is not required, correct?
Well, I'm looking at Lambertville's code here, and it says that the application, they have to get a zoning permit.
Yep.
And it has to include a satisfactory inspection certificate from the Hunterdon County Health Department, so I'm thinking they must have gone out there if they, on an, and it says every twelve months, within twelve months of the application. And it's annual, so I would think that's, that they aren't inspecting.
Yeah, but when I talked to Tracy about what they're doing in the Board, in, in East Amwell, again, they were specifically talking about more like food trucks, and they, but they, but they did address in our code cottage food operations, and she very specifically said, when they're not going out to, to, they, meaning Hunterdon County, is not going to the house to inspect, they are inspecting the food on, at the point of sale, which does not take place in the house. So this is something we want to get clarity on.
Doesn't the state also inspect the food products?
I don't think, no.
I don't think they do.
No? I thought they did.
I thought the state had a process, and East Amwells, we, we weren't able to provide the license that they needed to get the approval from the state. That was what we heard last month.
Yeah. The state has a training process, a like, a Board of Health licensing process, but they require essentially, from what I'm gathering, like, you need to be in compliance with the municipal laws, right? So now we sit here and say, well, what are the municipal laws? And, and how much, you know, should, can we just say, go, you know, the Board of Health is already put in a process to get a permit? Go get your permit from the Board of Health. Party on? Or do we need to address this in the zoning code? And I'm kind of looking at, I'm looking at the mayor, and I'm looking at others to say how.
Well, the difference between a food truck and, and the cottage home people is the food is cooked in the food truck, and so they wouldn't go to the house to inspect it because it's cooked in the truck. So I can imagine they would, they would examine the truck for food safety, but with the cottage food, it's being cooked at the house.
I agree. For one thing, I happen to know a lot of people who, people who have food trucks who actually do a lot of prep in the house, but we won't go there. That, that's, I, I think that, maybe we can pull the state code up, but I think it's very clear that a, that a home inspection was not required in the state code.
Okay, well, we have to check.
Yeah, so we can, we can check that. So I think, it sounds to me like.
Emily, I have also, there is a, um, under minor, minor home inspection, actually under B.
Is this under Lambert, is this from Lambertville's code?
Yes, yes. It's, it's very specific about the area that could be used, of the house or accessory.
Correct, yes.
So how you know that's, that's complying with that? It's, let's say, fifty percent of the first floor basement area or two fifty square feet or, so, so it has to be certain inspection, in my opinion, or something you have requirements.
So this is a great segue. Let's look at our current East Amwell's home occupation ordinance, right? So let's just, which states something not so dissimilar, right? The area devoted to permitted home occupation shall be located within either the operator's dwelling or building accessory there too, and shall be equivalent to not more than forty percent of the total area covered by the operator's dwelling, excluding the floor area covered by the attached garage or such other similar building or seven hundred square feet. Seven hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. So, and there's other things on that, on this list that we can go over, which sort begs the question, are we inspecting all of this today? Should we be getting in this? I, I really want to ask the question, like, should we, is this the business we want to get into, inspecting people's houses?
So, yeah. So here's my.
Yeah, here's your take.
Overall take on it is, the state has a program, the state has a program, and it's got primary responsibility for human health in eating the products, right?
Yeah.
So I think we can first turn to them to see what the State Department of Health says about how it's going to address that.
Yeah.
I think for us, you know, we probably don't have a problem with our residents doing some cooking and doing this, so long as the use really fits with who we are as a community.
Yeah.
And so to me, you know, home occupation, does it meet the definition? Does that make sure that there's not huge water usage, that there's not going to be so much more affluent that the septic can't take it, that there's, make sure that there's not a lot of people driving to the house or parking problems or traffic problems? So, so to me, I think the board may, maybe should be willing to explore it, and then maybe just do a checklist of all these things that would, see if we can meet those to keep our character and protect our residents, and if we can, we can satisfy that and still permit it, then it seems like it's something we might be able to do as well. That's my, just my overall impression, I think.
Yeah, that's, yeah. May, I think that, that's very similar to what I've seen from Lambertville and Somerville. On that note, may I just read the rest of our seven conditions, so that we are aware of what's already in place, and are we missing anything? Next one, persons engaging in a permitted home occupation shall be limited to the members of the household. You've got to live there, so you're not going to have a lot of outside employees. A home occupation shall not in any way alter the residential character of the neighborhood, nor in any way adversely affect the safe and comfortable enjoyment of the individual property rights of the neighborhood in which the use is located. Keep it rural. No machinery or equipment shall be used, which will cause interference with radio and television reception in the neighboring residences. There shall be no exterior display of products, no exterior storage of materials, and no other exterior indication of the home occupations or variation from the residential character of the principal buildings on the premise, or the principal building, I should say, on the premise. The parking and yard requirements of the principal use shall not be reduced. Examples of a home occupations, art studios, dressmaking, millinery, how do you say, millinery? Professional office of a physician, dentist, attorney, engineer, architect, accountant, artist, teaching, with musical and dance instruction limited to a single pupil at a time, assembly of materials sold by mail, repair of small household appliances for cabinet making. So noise, smell.
So I, I think you're right. I mean, that description that we already have is intended to make sure that somebody's, you know, doing some part-time something in their house, that it doesn't change the character of the, so, so that's a good, so the way that Lambertville is approaching it by having it fit under their minor, whatever they call that, but similar to our home occupation, would, you know, would limit that, you know, in a way. And, and I think we just have to go through those and see if that makes sense.
Yeah.
You know, for the use, because if our Board of Health is okay, if the state's okay, You know, for the use, because if our Board of Health is okay, if the state's okay, if we're not expanding the definition of home occupation, and if what's proposed, like the, the folks who came before us and spoke, or came in front of township committee spoke and said, look, we're, you know, we're baking cakes and things, and then we're taking them somewhere else to sell them, those kind of things all seem like they might line up for something that could, that could be done. I think, so for me, it's, it's kind of the checklist of the things, and the folks have been mentioning things that we'd have to make sure about.
So, yeah.
So, so where that leaves me overall is, I think your question initially was, you know, is this something we'd consider? I, I'd be willing, as a member of the planning board, to consider that.
Yeah.
Have us look into it and see whether it makes sense.
So there, from Somerville, there were, you know, with, people have raised questions on park, on traffic. So Somerville has something in their deliveries to and fro, to and from, so use the same type of trucks used by the postal service, UPS, FedEx, and other similarly delivered services, when providing regular service to residential use in zones. And all vehicular traffic to and from the cottage food shall be limited in volume and frequency to that which is normally associated with other residential uses in the zone. And then last but not least, there's no more affluent than you would see from a normal residential zone. Those are some of what came from Somerville. Go ahead.
All right, yeah. So I, my opinion, I would like to see this done, you know, the products being sold outside the home, you know, they bake, or the cookies, or the breads, or whatever, and go someplace else, distribute them. I don't want traffic going down the roads, you know, especially in our township.
Okay.
And no signage, you know, on the property. I think that's important.
So the no signage exists, but the not selling from the house is something. Is there, are there people that have an opinion on that?
Well, I, I don't want to see, you know, we could limit parking to one extra car, but they do sell to their neighbors. And they don't have to drive far away to sell it, and then come back to their neighbors.
Well, the, so the person who came before us was saying they don't sell to neighbors.
Right.
That this whole thing with the state program, as I understand it, was to do bulk items, then take it to, you know, the convention center, or these other events. I, I don't know as a factual matter whether folks are proposing to, to bake and sell to neighbors. I, that I don't know, but that was, that's not similar to the two folks who came before the township committee and expressed what they wanted to do.
I remember one expressing saying that neighbors were asking, and they would sell to neighbors.
All right, well, then.
Yeah, I think we end up at a weird place that we say, can't sell to this person, and you can't sell to that person. I think maybe-
Well, so define neighbor. You're talking like 50 feet from the property, or, you know, that starts getting complicated.
We're a tiny little township. We don't have a lot of people to go watch and see what people are doing.
Well, like I say, we couldn't limit only one extra car, or something, that we're not having tons of cars go there and park there, picking up.
And that's where I think that I'm, I'm, would go come down with the traffic level, being consistent with what's already there today. I mean, think about how many Amazon trucks we have coming and going on, in, in these, in small streets. So I'm not trying, you know, I want to-
Just put it out.
I want to be mindful of the fact that, say, the New Jersey put this long place to promote these small business operators, and want to keep that, you know, sort of spirit, as long as you say this is something we want, let's find, I'm sort of trying to gauge where's, where's the regulation level.
I, I would hope that we could come up with a list that Dante suggested in the mail, of all the externalities that an applicant could self-certify, that they're not, um, going to create, you know, they're not going to draw more water on the aquifer, or they're not going to create, so they can self-certify. And then if the Health Department gives them the permit, they can get the permit they need from the state, because it sounds like right now, we're tripping people up.
Yes.
And I, I think it should be as, like, the, the least amount of burden we can create for people.
Yeah, I don't think we want to be creating, like, heavy-handed, and this and that, and two, I mean, it doesn't, doesn't kind of fit. And I think we just have to protect the things we have to protect. And so if we can do that.
Then if there's a problem, you've got the list that said, you said-
You know, right.
Yeah.
This wasn't going to be a problem.
And you know who's doing it, based on Tracy's suggestion, that there's a registration or something with this, so, so folks, you know, wells go dry on both sides, there's just some knowledge that there may be an extra use there. And so at least there can be that conversation. So I, I agree with that.
Okay, so, so would it be safe to be say, would it, I don't, would it be safe to say that, we'll find out what Tracy puts back with, for the selling to and from the house, in terms of the Board of Health coverage. And from this body, we want to move forward, we can look at this under, as a home occupation, look at the existing home occupation conditions, see if we, see if they cover, perhaps there's one more we need, or something. And then that's, and then also look at putting in some sort of registration or permit?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and, because Jamal gets things done, so I, I'm on a motion that he, maybe think about working up, like, work up a checklist, I mean, if, if you're willing.
Or like a postcard permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And say, look, these would be the things, and that, it helps us with the discussion to see what matters, and also sees, well, how could we address that as a simple way of doing it?
Yeah.
You know, I think that would be just useful, because if we go through the whole checklist of things we're concerned about, and we can address it, then-
It's covered in the checklist, it's covered in the ordinance, and, so would it be safe, you know, I'm mindful that we do have residents who are waiting.
Yep.
If it's, if it's okay with this body, we'll try to move forward, maybe Jamal and I and one other person can work forward to coming up with a checklist and a draft of an ordinance, circulate that before the next meeting for input, so that when we come here, we can have a conversation, it will be something that we can then refer back to the township committee.
If you bring Tracy then, we can have some, all of it, so.
I'll see if she can, I'll see if she can come. And also, I think there are residents that may have some input.
Exactly.
But I'm hoping that we can get us to an ordinance that we can send back to the township committee, even if you then need to make a few more changes, just in light of keeping this moving.
Okay. We wasn't have a public, just in case that we missed something?
Sure.
Okay.
Now I have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Open to the public, just on the home occupation.
As usual, me. Live on Lyndale Road, and four doors up. I had 20 gallons a minute when my house was built. Four doors up, there's a tiny little ranch, and I know from people that used to live there a long ti, well, enough of my next door neighbor who knew the people that lived there, that they had a problem when it's dry. And I know that, I, I have a friend who knows everything that lives in the mountain. So when I mentioned this, these people who are back there, at that meeting that I happened to be in, in months ago, my friend told me that her biggest issue was going to be water.
Yeah, which is what Tracy wrote.
And my suggestion would be that she go through the Board of Health, and she get a board, a water adequacy, and even if possible, making sure that they're not-
Drying down.
Impacting the neighbors.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, so this is where I think the Board of Health really is there.
Yeah.
We'll see if we can have Tracy come up with some. Please state your name.
Hi, so my name is Linda McDonald. I am one of the, I can get a cottage license.
Okay.
So just to give you some information, the license, it's actually, is under the state Health Department. So they regulate everything as far as, do we cook our food, what we're allowed to cook and not cook. And you were mentioning that the cottage life, food business is under the home occupation. It's related to that, but it's not quite the same, just because we cook out of our house, but we don't run the business out of our home. So it is all different. For my situation, is I have, I love to cook from my home, but sell at a farmers market. There is a farmers market that is interested in me, but I cannot move forward.
Yes.
Unless I get the approval from East Amwell to be able to go to the State Department and just say, hey, I got the approval from them, I got my certifications, I did everything that I'm supposed to be doing. The only step that I need is for this board to, to come up with an argument that will allow me to do it. As far as traffic, I'm not intending to be selling anything out of my house. My goal is really to be able to bake, and take it to a farmers market festival. That's what I'd like to do. There was another, oh, about the, the fee for a permit or for a license, you mentioned $250. I've looked at different township, and they usually run about $100. So.
So, so for that one, so when I spoke, this is, when I spoke to the East Amwell Township Board of Health Chair, she informed me, this is news to me, that, that we, that Board of Health has already put in some pla, some, some regulations for cottage food. And they have already put into place a, a process to get a Board of Health permit for cottage food. So, in East Amwell. So that fee was set outside of this board, it's at the Board of Health, their meeting is next Tuesday. And I want to, you know, to me, the question was, is that going to, would that be sufficient to let them move forward while we work this out, or do we need to, you know, while we put in an ordinance? And I don't, I don't have an answer, but it did, it did occur to me.
Well, I mean, my, I mean, my thought is, the Board of Health is one aspect, but I think the planning board needs to determine what and how.
Okay.
Before applications are deemed to satisfy the, you know, municipal law, that, that would be my take. Because we want to make sure that there aren't problems with the use, because-
No, I think we, you don't want that ambiguity out there.
Inconvenience to residents and have problems. And since we're, you're working on it, I don't think it'll be long-
Yeah.
Till the next meeting to have another discussion, and see if it's something that can be entertained.
Yeah, okay.
Dante, once we come up with a checklist and, and do it, do you have to then pass the ordinance, so that it will wait until the-
Yep.
The township committee meeting and the second Thursday of-
So the way I, yes, that is how it works. And I would think the planning board really is vetting it, right, with its experience in land use, and thinking of the concerns of the public. And, and that checklist also will help the township committee members know that interests of the residents are going to be addressed if folks are able to go through this process. So I, yes, it would then, we work up the best thing we can propose, and then send it to the township committee, and-
And there'll be two hearings at that township committee?
Correct.
The June and July, so the earliest we can get something through is the July township meeting?
Oh, oh, the regular schedule, yes, but, you know, who knows about scheduling? I mean, I think, I think the point is, this is a needy topic, because it could potentially affect other folks, if we make sure that it doesn't have detrimental effects. That, that, that makes it easier to move.
I'm just asking for people who are waiting.
Yeah, I understand, yeah. This is why I, this is why, you know, since the Board of Health has already put something in place, you know, that was my question.
I don't know if I should speak. The only other suggestion I would have, and here's the downside, is that someone could apply for an interpretation of township's ordinance, the home occupation ordinance.
Yeah, I wasn't going to suggest anything now, because I think-
To see if this, you know, fits under that, that definition. However, it's not a, an approval of an application. What it is, it's an interpretation for everybody. Anybody who comes in, then, you know, can rely on that interpretation, because the Board of Adjustment would have said, yep, that's, that this applies. And if, and if the planning board feels that, no, we need something with conditions, you know, that we, we are not really happy with what our home occupation ordinance says right now, and we want some conditions on this, then I, you know.
Well, and is it a, is it a, a home occupation currently? I mean, does it fit that definition? It's another interpretation choice, because, you know, the things that are mentioned there-
Those are just examples.
That, that they are.
It's not a, it's not a-
But the kind of examples, to me, are all things that are done, like, with your, with your laptop, right? Most of them are, so I think-
They don't make refuse, they don't make, they don't use water.
Right. And so, and so to me, I think the issue is, that, that would take process too, right, to go through, even if there were an interpretation request. So we might as well go through and analyze it, and see what we think's appropriate. That, that's my suggestion.
And also, I wanted to add also that you were discussing about inspection of the home. Under the cottage license, the, the home does not get inspected.
I understand.
By state, that's what they said. However, the food is inspected at the place where I'll be venting. There's a health state department representative who would come and check my food, check the ingredients, make sure everything is in order, and then allow me to actually sell that day.
And I do believe that is the Hunter County that was, Health Department that will actually go out there. And our Board of Health rules, our Board of Health, Tracy told me she's, Tracy specifically had a conversation with the Hunter County Board of Health about how that was all going to work. And this is why she could, there's some consideration given to this.
Actually, I don't think it is-
But you're selling in front, so you would be-
Yeah, I don't think it is Hunter County, unless I will be selling.
In Hunter County?
Yes, yeah. Wherever I'm going to be selling, this is whoever, isn't that, you know, we'll take care of that.
How frequently are the, their inspections of food done?
I don't know.
Is it just a random inspection?
I, yeah, I think it is random. You know, because I don't think that they'll plan it. I think they just come, show up and check everything, otherwise it would be just easy for anybody, you know, to plan it and do any alteration.
So just to be clear, that's your situation, right? Is it, because there are other people that might want to prepare food in their house, too. Now, is, does this law just cover people who are taking food off premises, or those that are cooking in their house, and then they're going to deliver it to somebody else? Because then, how do they get inspected?
This was exactly my question to Tracy. And she said, I'm going to have a conversation with the Board of Health attorney and get that feel.
I, I'm not sure about that. That's not my situation.
Yeah.
My situation is, yeah.
I thought someone else who came here last time had had another situation.
Yeah, it would be somebody else, that was me. And for me, it's, it's very delicate, just because I have this conversation with this market, and they're waiting to have me there. But I don't know if they're going to be waiting to hold the space for me until July or August, you know, when you guys come up with a solution.
So I can tell you that it will be on the Board of Health agenda, and that meeting is next Tuesday. It's already going to be on the agenda for discussion for Board of Health. I am hoping to go there. I would encourage you to go to that meeting, it says a meeting.
It's Tuesday?
Next Tuesday. You can get the information on the township website. I would love it if a couple of the planning board members would go, just as long as they're not in the forum, my mistake, just to have other people here and be able to ask the questions from Tracy. Because I do think we, my hope is that most of the health things can be handled by the Board of Health, and we just come back and make sure that we, that we're relying on the Board of Health, and then we just make sure we have the right conditions in the, in the, in the land use. I don't want to get into the Board of Health details, other than to share what I learned, because I'm clearly far out of my area of expertise.
Right. And I believe that Mr. Wolf mentioned something about the, the health, the Board of Health of East Amwell, something about cottage food license?
Yeah, that's what I was just saying. That's what I was just saying.
That's what she's talking about.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
That's the $250 fee, that's the license they already put in place.
Well, this is what they were expecting.
This is where you can go next Tuesday. And also, I believe, the clerk, Linda Gilberti, now has information on that as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
So progress is being made. It's a little slower than you'd like, but we are working on it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to get, no? Okay. Thank you, everyone. May I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we are closed to the public on that item. Next.
Thanks for all your research.
Thank you.
It's, it's a detailed area.
I thought it would be so easy. And I wanted it to be so easy. Okay, next up, we have a completeness hearing. Leslie, Leslie Parsons, estate of Irma Parsons, Fifth East Snyder Town Road.
No, I'm waiting for it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to double check.
And we have no use for it, right?
No.
No, I don't think there's a, yeah.
There's no use, as I saw.
This is not a use, no?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Rich Mongelli, on behalf of the applicant for completeness hearing.
Yep.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
We've had the benefit of reviewing Rob's completeness report of April 4, 2025, and we agree, we have no objection. Rob, one clarification, the temporary waiver on the well and septic. That's item-
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. We'll, we'll provide testimony, and I think our plans show the well and septic on both lots not impacted at all.
Right, if we, there are testimony, we can clarify that.
Yeah, so this is just, this is simply a lot line adjustment, there is no, nothing being built there.
Nothing at all.
You're just moving land, moving land around.
Moving a little further from the well and septic, actually, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've looked at the applications. Everyone else had an applicant, look, look just for completeness. Any questions on, from the board?
The only comments I saw were from Rob. Do we have any other professional comments? I, because I saw nothing objectionable about-
No, and this is just completeness and-
No, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
And so unless there's something else, I don't, I don't see an issue.
All right, so the board, we need to grant these waivers.
Yeah.
Temporary waivers, and then schedule a closing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would make a motion to do that, and-
See, a motion to grant the waivers and find this complete?
Yep.
Putting words into your mouth?
No, no, I was, yeah, I was going with his words.
May I have a second? All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Do we need a book?
No, no. Okay, no. Okay, so the application is not complete. Unfortunately, I cannot give you a date, as right now, we've got a lot of moving applications. I also recognize that this should be a simple one.
Yep.
We will ideally try to slide it in as soon as possible, but I don't want to make a promise I can't make. Keep right now. I know I only have 45 days to act.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So I heard that this is for a sale of the property?
There is a sale, yes.
And is there already a contract with a closing date?
There is. We are getting a little heat, so they're wondering where we're at.
Yeah.
We were, and trying to contemplate a way to do the sale, but then we realized, wait a second, the buyer has a mortgage. And we're going to have a problem with a mortgage on the spit of land we're moving.
Yeah.
So my colleague up in Clinton keeps emailing me, hey, where are you?
Got it.
I told him, we're here tonight for completeness. Public hearing will take 12 minutes, I promise.
Yeah, okay. So we will try this, we will, yeah, I, I know I can get it in this week, this month.
As you can. Yeah, I understand.
And I will do everything I can, I just don't want to make a promise, I can't keep it till. So I'm looking, I'm looking there. We have a pretty full agenda, but I hear you and I will do, we'll be in touch.
We appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, application of Robert Monahan, Block Five, Lot 110. This is a continuation from previous meetings in June and September of 2024. This is a appeal of a zoning officer decision, certificate of non, a request for certificate of nonconformity and a use variance.
Yeah, the board is, the board is reconstituting as a Board of Adjustment. So I just wanted to report that we looked at the, the applicant renoticed because we had the meeting canceled. It was supposed to be a special meeting of March 25th that ended up being canceled due to publication issues. So the applicant renoticed, we reviewed the affidavit of proof of publication and everything is in order. It's published in the Times of Trenton on April 3rd, and everything is fine for that. We have what new, some new members that reviewed the video. Is there a certification process you have? Have we had some, have we signed, correct? I know it was.
Wait, please, I believe we just testified.
Just have them testify to that? Okay. So that would be.
Translation? Got it. And I just agree I had one, one missing.
I do have a form that you can use.
The form, okay. And then I just wanted to go over some housekeeping items.
Go for it.
From what I understand, at the September 6th meeting, Mr. O'Brien was waiting for information from the NJDEP regarding the flood hazard riparian zone. And that was issued on this June 28th, 24. According to that information, the NJDEP visited the site on the 24th, right? And advised that progress had been made. And I think Rob sent an email to the board about this. Okay, on the 14th. And then the planning board chair was able to find the township's historical land ordinances. The applicant's attorney reviewed them. She sent, and she could, you know, confirm, but she sent a letter to the board on the 12th of November. She was requesting an adjournment to 2025, granting a continuance to March 2025. I think we've got a continuance since then. She also stated that she reviewed the historical ordinances on the 11th of October. And as a result, that her client was conceding that the zoning in 1990 did not actually allow for landscaping business on the property. So the use was not illegally, not existing nonconforming use as required by statute. So the board can't issue a certification for that. So as a result, the board's left with deciding the appeal of the revocation of the May 2023 zoning permit. And/or the applicant's alternative request for relief, which is the use variance. The applicant applied, supplied a brief on equitable stoppall. I've opined that the board doesn't have jurisdiction to give that kind of remedy, remedy. But I think the board should decide whether or not it agrees that it does not have jurisdiction. And if the board agrees there's no jurisdiction, then there should be a motion to deny the appeal on that basis. And then we could talk about the variances. And I, do you want to make a statement? I, I would like to just, we had an exhibit list that we reviewed over. And I think Ms. Voight wants to introduce some additional exhibits formally for the record.
Okay, the ones that we've already received?
Yeah.
Through 42, I think it was, or 43?
I wanted to make sure that there were a couple of exhibits that were in the record as well.
For the board, yeah.
Yeah, we had received a complete zoning application from 2023. And I wanted to call that Exhibit B1, take additional notice of that. As well as construction file documents, which were emailed to everybody on October 11th, 2024. So we can call that Exhibit B2. And the reason for putting into the record the complete zoning application is because I see in that, that the zoning permit that was requested in May of 2023 was for a home-based business. And so I think that according to that permit history, it states that the application is a home-based business, as Mr. Johnston had conducted. And my opinion for the board is that even if it were a legally pre-existing nonconforming use, it ceased when Mr. Johnston sold the property in 2001. And at that point, the proctors were residing on the property. And then it became where, a situation where Mr. Johnston was renting the barn out for storage. So the zoning officer couldn't really give a permit to reestablish that use in 2023. So that is my opinion, we're talking about a use variance. We can, we, I know your previous attorney talked about two principal uses on one property. Fact that the commercial use is not permitted in the zone. And then I also see, you know, if there was no home-based business at that point, when the zoning ordinance was, the zoning application was filed.
And also having, now that you mention it, this is what I'm thinking about, I spent a little bit of time with the home occupation ordinance right now and all the, and all of the conditions around that.
Right.
Which is no traffic, no smell, no sound, you know, there's a bunch.
Right, and the, and the other reason that I wanted to make sure that the construction file documents were listed as part, as part of the record is because there is a, a conflict with what's listed on the exhibit, which is listed as B2, the construction file. And also, you know, what was submitted with the application. And just for the record, you know, the, the B2 group says that the application was for a 40 by 100-foot pole barn. And the other one that was submitted by the applicant also talks about landscape and farm-based business equipment storage. And I, I'm not a handwriting expert, so I'm not sure how that came to be. I know it's not Mr. Monahan's writing, you know? But I just wanted to put into the record that there's conflicting docs.
Yes.
And that's it, okay? And so with that.
Ms. Dragon, I do have the zoning permit application that you referenced. I don't see reference to a home-based business, it's true, a request to continue the landscape business.
No, there's, let me see if I can find this now.
I think I emailed it to everybody, it was eight pages long.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, I saw it.
Oh, you're talking about the email that was attached to the application for a landscape business pre-existing?
Right, and there's a, there's a complete, there's a complete package there.
So that was part of the application, right?
It was all part of the application, and that's what I'm talking about. We have a, a first page that's got the landscape business listed on the top. And then there's a description of work to be done, I got it.
Yes, I see what you're referring to, this, this statement.
Yeah, and then there's a.
Home, home business zoning application pre-existing use.
Yeah, then there's like two, almost like receipts from the zoning office, maybe it's the same one twice. But it says residential home occupation, Zone 10. And then it says, there's a certification from Mr. Monahan saying, I'm looking to run, and it says home-based business zoning application pre-existing use on the top. And it, and it says that I'm looking to run my landscape business out of 35 Rosemont Ringo's Road. The pole barn was built for the previous owner to store his landscape farm equipment, I'm looking to do the exact same thing. And then it goes on, you know, to describe that. And it says, this will be the only, I'm looking to live there, and talks about the, the use there, so.
Understood, okay, I thought you were saying it was like nearly an application under the home occupation ordinance, whereas he disclosed that he believed it was an application for.
No, he's saying he had a pre-existing use, but it was, it was listed by the zoning officer as, you know, a home, home occupation. Because the guy's living there and he's going to conduct the business there.
And the testimony in the record, as I recalled it, was that Mr. Johnston continued to operate his landscape business even after he sold and was a tenant of the proctors?
Correct, but he was, before that, he lived at the property.
Correct.
So there's a difference now, where, to, in my opinion, regarding the use. Because there was a use occurring where someone is living there and then operating, you know, his storage business or his ag business out of the barn. Now he's gone in 2001, so it's a different set of circumstances. We have a different owner at, residing in the property, and now he's renting a barn out, so it's different.
Okay, and we would say that the, the aspect of it that didn't change was that at all times he continued to operate the landscaping business out of that, out of that pole barn.
Where I, I guess there's a, that's a question of, was it a business or was it just storage, you know?
We've, we have conceded, now that we have the ordinances, that we, there's, there's no point in trying to get a certification of a prior, a previously existing legal nonconforming use because of what the ordinance has said as of 1990. So I don't know that this is even going to be that relevant, but I did want to just make sure that we kind of are understanding each other in terms of.
I want to just understand the nature of the variances that are being requested at this point, you know, just clarify that. We're not seeking to operate a home-based occupation and, you know, and then vary the conditions. We're going for a straight use variance, you know, for two uses on one property, basically. Is that what we're doing?
Sharon, should we run through and make this complete?
Yeah, I, I want to first, I think what we first want to do is make sure that we're not talking about the application for the reversal of the zoning permit. So did you want to make an argument at that?
Yeah, I, I would, if I can just take a moment and sort of start fresh here. And I really do appreciate the recap of everything, you've covered some of the ground that I was going to cover if you didn't. One thing I did want to check on is who are the voting members this evening? Because I see six members who have been here at the last two hearings. And I don't think I heard a name mentioned as to whether it was one of the new alternates or Ms. Teresi who may have watched the videos.
So Beth is saying is a new, is a new, new alternate, and she's watched the videos, I spoke with her.
Okay, can I just get that name, please?
Is your, is her name tag not there?
It's over here.
Oh, we moved the names, they're good. I was like, wait a second, we tried to put the name tags to make it easy. Thank you.
So who are you?
So this one we don't need?
Okay, you're Mary.
So that's, okay, so Mary's not here. And then.
Mary Van Horn was one of the.
And she is not here.
Okay, so she is not here.
She is not here.
Okay, so do we have another person certifying?
So I missed one, September, and I watched twice.
Okay, thank you.
Testimony, yes.
And then Lance Lathan, to my left here, with the blue shirt.
Okay, so who are the voting members this evening? Who are the seven, because I now have eight.
All right, so you don't need alternate number, or what are we down to, three or four?
We're alternate down.
Lance is alternate three, so you can participate but not vote. And then that's group alternate two.
And also the alternate who can participate and not vote should not make a motion as well.
Correct, I know you have, are very sensitive to that, you've had an issue in the past.
Yes, I have had that issue. Okay, so thank you so much. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the briefs that I submitted and that Ms. Dragon submitted? Assuming you have, I will not belabor the points that are in those briefs. You know, I, I believe that the brief prepared by Ms. Dragon advising the board that you do not have jurisdiction based upon the concepts of equitable stoppall is, is a fair assessment. It is not inconsistent with the limited cases that are available on which she cited. However, those cases were presented to the courts on different grounds with different facts. The Jan Tausch case was from 1957, it predates the municipal land use law. It disregards the board's quasi-judicial functions. The Springstill case involved a party requesting a board's equitable consideration of a private third-party agreement. The O'Neil case is unpublished, and notes that a board declined to exercise equitable jurisdiction. The municipal land use law allows the board to decide if there's been an error in a decision of the zoning officer made in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance. I do not believe the cases cited in Ms. Dragon's brief have directly decided the following question. Can a zoning Board of Adjustment use its quasi-judicial function to overturn a zoning officer's decision upon a finding that the inequities which result rise to the level of an error in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance? In my opinion, the right case to answer this very question has not yet been presented to the courts for decision on this exact issue. I recognize that this is a difficult position for the board. I cannot say with 100% certainty whether you do or do not have jurisdiction. I also can't say with 100% certainty that you do not. I've advised Mr. Monahan that appeal to the courts is likely going to be required in order to have his equitable rights heard. Should that become necessary as a result of the position that we all find ourselves in here tonight? Ms. Dragon and I do agree, if I'm reading your brief correctly, that a denial may be appealed to the court. And then the court could decide these facts of this case, they would decide it de novo, with a fresh start, and determine if Mr. Monahan has equitable rights. The Bond Venture case in which that happened, which is the case cited in my brief, protected a property owner's equitable rights where the use was much more intensive than Mr. Monahan's. The property owner was not penalized for having expanded the use after ownership. So we know that Mr. Monahan had expanded outside of the scope of a landscaping business after he took ownership. He's learned his lessons the hard way. He did things he thought he could do and learned he couldn't. In the Bond of Venture case, the same thing happened, they had expansions. The court didn't penalize them, they just rolled it back to what was there at the time of the purchase. And that's what the, what the property owner could do in the Bond of Venture case. And that's what Mr. Monahan is seeking to do. He just wants to do what Mr. Johnston did for 25 years. In my brief on equity, I set forth the he, the history of reasonable reliance on the belief that this was a permitted use. And I'll just very quickly paraphrase those points, and we'll move on to the question that needs to be decided by you. In 2016, the proctors who owned the property at that time advised the township that Mr. Johnston's construction and use permit were on file with the township. The township did not refute this. In 2016, the proctors directly asked the township to advise them in writing if the landscape business use was not within the letter and spirit of the law. And the township did not respond. These documents are in the record, they're cited in my brief. In 2022, the proctors and Mr. Johnson advised Mr. Monahan that the pole barn and landscaping business were permitted uses. Mr. Mr. Monahan testified to this at the first hearing. In 2022, Mr. Monahan purchased the property based upon his expectation of this mixed use, and he purchased it with a loan and with a mortgage. In 2023, the zoning officer issued a continuing zoning permit wherein even your zoning officer reasonably believes and reported that Mr. Monahan is continuing illegally permitted use. In 2023, the township clerk advised Mr. Kirchner that the landscaping business was considered a pre-existing nonconforming use based upon a previous construction permit and zoning approval. And Mr. Kirchner had an attorney at that time, according to the emails in the record, and he did not appeal this. In his testimony, Mr. Kirchner conceded that the landscaping business existed for decades under Mr. Johnston without objections. And Mr. Monahan is seeking the right to continue that use as it has for all of those years. So those are the points in support of his equitable rights to continue a use that, through whether it's acts or emissions, the township has essentially allowed to continue for all of these decades until somebody took issue with Mr. Johnston, with Mr. Monahan. And brought it to this, we ended up. Those are the equitable considerations that we would ask a court to consider. I have advised Mr. Monahan that, you know, the use variance application should be heard. That there's, would be no, no need to have any court filing if a use variance were granted, because it would make the point moot. I consider a use variance to be a better result than an equitable decision because a use variance is a document that you can impose the conditions you have, it's very clear. We don't have an awkward record going forward and trying to sell the property in the future. I prefer use variances over certifications of prior nonconforming uses or other forms of relief. So certainly we would have no need for a variant, for a, an equitable consideration by the courts if there were a variance. But this is the posture that we have, I have to advise my client that he has equitable rights. But a variance would certainly obviate the need for that.
Well, as discussed, I, in my, in my brief, I feel that the board doesn't have jurisdiction, I think it's pretty settled. And if you were to find that there was an equitable argument, I, I do believe that would be beyond, you know, your authority. The Boards of Adjustment are statutorily created creatures. You're given authority under the statutes to do certain things. And, you know, they're listed in the, the land use law. And as I said in my brief, the only time that I've seen that a board has considered an equitable argument was under a court order to do so and to create a record. And, you know, that's not the situation here. I do agree that this could be appealed to court and that they would start new. But I think that that's what a court can do, is grant equitable relief. And I, as far as the Bond of Venture case itself, you know, there are distinguishing factors there in the fact pattern than we are here, which I, I think are, are relevant. One is that in Bond of Venture, the applicant had gone to the Board of Adjustment many times. And the Board of Adjustment's the one that made the mistake as far as assuming that this use had been approved for this 96-seat restaurant when it really had been for much less. less. And so this is the first time that we have an applicant coming to the board of adjustment for resolution of this case, which is a different situation to me. And also, I've just noticed that in the whole discussion and the, in the recordings here, I have to say that I, I don't find that Mr. Monahan testified that he made any inquiry to the township before purchasing the property. I feel that everything that he's presented was information received from the seller. So is his equitable argument against the town or is it against the seller? Because the documents he got were there. And there's a case called Grasso out there versus, let's see, what town is that?
Spring Lake Heights.
Spring Lake Heights, thank you. Grasso versus Spring Lake Heights where an applicant actually provided incorrect information to the zoning officer who didn't go back and look at it himself to see if it was correct or not. And it turned out that this height variance was corrected. And if everybody had looked at the zoning ordinance, they would have found that it was pretty explicit in the, the ordinance that there was a height variance that was required. So the court there said, well, you know, Mr. Applicant, you are required to go do an independent review of this ordinance yourself. And you can't just rely on your architect and your, you know, engineer who produced the information to the township. And the other thing that was a little interesting to me was that it just, you know, many times information that's provided to the zoning officer, zoning officer doesn't necessarily go to the extra step of actually investigating stuff themselves, you know? So you have to make your own investigation. And in this case, the property was purchased in 2022 and we don't have any zoning permit being applied for until 2023, almost a whole year later. So I have to think to myself is whether or not there's a detriment, you know? Was that the reason? Was the township's actions the cause of Mr. Monahan's damages here, you know? Or was it something else? Because it seems to have done, come a lot later after there was already a decision to buy the property based on what seller's information was. So that's what I see here.
Questions from members of the board? So are we being asked to take a vote?
You should take a vote for the record because one way or another, if you want to, A, you know, make a motion that there is no jurisdiction based on the equitable estoppel argument, or you think there is jurisdiction and you want to make a decision on equitable estoppel. You can do, you could dismiss the, the, deny the request for the reversal of the building permit on, you know, either way or approve it.
Okay. Well, we could, okay.
Well, there's an opportunity for the public to speak.
This is really a legal determination to be made by the board. So really, there's no public discussion for this part.
I guess the question I have that I wanted in that brief was that it's a search of judicial records for, so it, it naturally, you would only find remedies from the courts and things where the court had decided the case. But that doesn't mean that Planning Board, if a Planning Board just made a decision like we've been asked to make, there would be no record of that in the database.
But then it's not binding on anybody because it's, there's no court decision.
So we have to look at the statute is what you're saying?
Yeah.
We're not looking?
I'll make the motion.
What's the motion?
The motion is that we adopt the recommendation of our council and, and the, that there is no jurisdiction of this body to afford equitable relief and that the, and that is the end of it. It's a, it's a legal determination.
May I have a second? Is there a second? Can you second that? All in favor?
I think you should take a roll call.
Take a roll call, okay. Um.
And yes or no equitable relief?
Right.
Support that.
Yeah, his motion was that we will adopt the recommendation of council that there's no jurisdiction of this body to offer equitable relief.
Mr. Cadre.
Can I abstain?
Yeah, if you want to.
I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so.
Right, this is the problem.
It's not my area of expertise.
This is the problem.
May I ask, should I get this, should I include Mr. Lathan as an eighth, as a seventh?
No, because you've got enough people here and he voted. He's, he's an abstaining person, so the rest of them can just vote.
Thank you. Mr. Katanachi.
Yes.
Ms. Wiggum.
Yes.
Mr. McGovern. Ms. Teresi.
Yes.
Ms. Hussein.
Yes.
And Chairperson Dedwiler.
Yes. You have six, yes.
So then we're on to the variance part of it, okay.
With respect to the variance, we were at completeness on this. I wanted to just briefly summarize on the request for completeness.
Yeah, we need to do it a completeness, basically finding a complete.
So on that topic, it's relevant to consider the fact that I am unable to find that this would be exempt from site plan review if it were treated as a change in use from a existing pole barn with a historically occurring agricultural use. I don't really know exactly how we'll frame this, so we'll work together here. But it would be considered a change in use to this property to a landscaping business where he would be able to have his, all of his equipment there for storage and then people, he and his employees could take that equipment and go and work offsite. So that would be how to frame it. I believe that would be considered an application for development that would not fall within your definition of a site, an exempt site plan. And therefore, it would require a site plan. I believe it would qualify for a minor site plan. And so this would be treated as a bifurcated application where essentially there would be a request that the use variance be reviewed tonight so that this could be determined before there was any effort put into the time and expense of site planning. I wanted to just point out quickly a few things. On the waiver requests, these were submitted to the board as the, from your checklist of the waivers required for a use variance application. And to summarize, and of course I'll let you defer to your professionals here, but to summarize, the justification for the items that we've requested waivers from all were because they were either not applicable or they're only relevant when a new structure is proposed. And this is all existing structures, so there's no new proposed improvements or structures. The items that you would want to see on a survey, they can be ascertained by combining the surveys you have been provided, there was an updated one in 2024, with the various aerial photographs and other documents provided. And then last, the items shown on the application documents, even if not on a survey, such as septic location are shown on another application document such as exhibit 29. And I just want to note that before coming here tonight, knowing we would be visiting this question, I did compare your checklist between a D. variance and a minor site plan. There's really not much more that you require to review a minor site plan because I know the board could consider what would it need to know about the site in order to deem a variance complete in a bifurcated application. And looking at your checklist for site plan, there's not a lot more that the board requests that would even be relevant here. It simply includes some items that aren't relevant like details on grading and steep slopes. I could go into more detail if you were interested, but, you know, it also asks for outside agency review. This is not in DRC, C-zone A or B. It would be an application to the Hundredan County Planning Board and I do not believe that this would trigger soil erosion and sediment control. So I believe you have in front of you all of the information that would be relevant to being able to properly analyze and make a decision on a variance and we respectfully request that the application be deemed complete.
Mr. O'Brien, can you give us some guidance on this case?
Let me pull up the request. Do we have a copy, do we have a copy of the requested variance waiver?
I can pull it up in front of you. I can pull it up, give me one second. I had my eye on it today, but I did not print it.
The April cover letter, so the April cover letter.
I have that probably.
The April cover letter was when first there was an application, or excuse me, an appeal that was filed. And then in April, so a year ago, the application was supplemented to add the request for certification as well as the variance. In that cover letter, we detail on a checklist item by item basis how the variances are requested. A lot of those were repeated over from the appeal application. Some of them say that there's no application for development. That should be disregarded. It's that they're either not applicable or there's no new structures that are being proposed in those cases.
Do you have that April cover letter?
And those were variance requests or use variance waiver requests?
Correct.
Excuse me. Well, the letter, yeah, there should be a letter.
Here's the letter.
Right, they have, they have a letter where they gave.
Would you like? I might have an extra copy. Dated April 3rd, 2024. And it has a list of all the checklist items for which they are requesting. Unfortunately, this version I have has my notes on it.
Would either Mr. O'Brien be able to take my seat or I could go and print them?
You want someone?
Oh, if Mr. O'Brien would like.
Can you hand me a copy?
I'm happy to lend you mine. Just has a few notes on it, okay. Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
So now you're saying this is going to be under a minor site plan checklist item? Okay, all right, just want to make sure that's what was confusing about it. In the letter I had sent back in February in response to this to the board was I recommend that for completeness purposes only, these items in this April 3rd letter be granted by the board.
Okay.
For completeness only, all of these.
All these waived.
Under checklist, the P. items. That's, that's the only one that I looked at. The administrative items are handled by.
Yep.
By Kristin. So I recommended back in February that the board grant these for completeness only so that we can link to the public.
And I think the only question that had come up in conversation was the site plan, but it seems that the survey from exhibit 32, I think?
Correct, that has insufficient information in my opinion. And as long as the board grants these waivers from that April 3rd letter.
Okay.
Then I believe they have enough information to.
To consider.
Consider this application, yeah.
Okay. Everyone's looking for papers. Do you want the April 3rd letter?
I don't want it right now. It's fine because I'm just looking for the exhibit 32.
Oh, exhibit 32, I have that. And I may have referenced the wrong exhibit.
There's 29, I'm sure there's a survey. 32 was the updated one from August of last year.
And do I see larger versions of that?
29.
Lots of them.
Oh, good. Now you're talking.
Can you, Ms. Boyd, what's the date of that survey that you're talking about, this exhibit 32?
Here it is.
Ms. Boyd, what's the date of that survey?
April 20th. The survey.
The survey itself?
Survey 23, yes.
2023 revised August 30th, 2024.
Yes.
Prepared by Golden Bond Engineering.
Any of the board members have any questions about granting these waivers? May I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept those waivers.
And find the application complete?
And find the application complete.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. She's not, let me give her a minute so she can take the roll. I just realized I just moving too fast. Too much paper to which me moving too fast.
I have a question.
Okay, before, look.
On, on this checklist that I have, they ask for waiver for informal impact statement, traffic impact statement, humidity impact statement, and local, and there's groundwater management drainage. And I have concerns about pretty much all of those things.
These are temporary.
So these are waivers for completeness. I think we can ask for, my personal opinion is we can ask for testimony of this during the variance application.
Correct.
So we're only asking for, we're only thinking about waivers so that we can hear the application. We can put conditions, we can ask them to go back and get more information. This is to just to start the, the variance hearing.
Not a permanent waiver.
Not a permanent waiver. So are you, you okay with that one? So I asked, who gave you the, you seconded it?
No.
You made the motion and who seconded? Okay, so the mo, I put a motion out. It is to accept these waivers for completeness purposes only, find the application complete so that as we can take jurisdiction for a variance hearing. And the second was, who was seconded that?
Michael.
Okay, Michael seconded that. And can you take a roll? I know that we probably don't need it, but let's do it.
Mr. Cadre.
Yes.
Mr. Katanachi.
Yes.
Ms. Wiggum.
Yes.
Mr. McGovern.
Yes.
Ms. Teresi.
Yes.
Ms. Hussein.
Yes.
Chairperson Dedwiler.
Yes.
All right. It is 8:30. Just, can we take a five-minute break?
Absolutely.
I'm so sorry to do this.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
Do I need a motion for that? Okay, we'll take, the, the board will take a 10-minute break. We will be back, be back at 8:40 so we can start, so we can start this application.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll be back in ten minutes. Are we up there?
Yeah.
Not yet? We still on the.
It's just a switch that makes.
Believe that this will occur in the way that would be acceptable to you. I know we've covered a lot of ground. I know Mr. Monahan's incredibly discouraged. But this landscape business existed on this property for over twenty years in some form, so I do not see how anyone could justify not finding that way, that there's some version of this that he can continue on this property as Mr. Johnston did. Two concerns have been raised. You know, one of the things I will say is that you're looking at the positive and negative criteria of a use variance. And we got a chance to really look at some of this pretty close when we were hearing testimony in the first two hearings. There was a concern raised about the truck parts business. What I want to say about that is, as previously stated, Mr. Monahan learned the hard way. That he can't have a truck parts business there. If he does not want to have a truck parts business there, there's no way he's going to get away with even trying to have a truck parts business there. He wants to do what Mr. Johnston did. I want to point out a few things. In the first meeting, Richard Kurtzner testified that he's known Fred Johnson for thirty years and he has great concerns that Mr. Monahan is not Fred Johnson. He said, if Robert Monahan were Fred Johnson, he'd have no concerns. He would not be here objecting to this before the board. I have the recordings. I have the clips. It's just in thirty seconds if you want to hear it again. I won't play it unless you ask me to, but I have it. So he essentially, if you look at his emails, and I believe it was exhibit thirty, all the emails, the concerns were all about the landscaping business. Excuse me. Thank you. All about the truck parts business. There were no complaints about the landscaping business. So in terms of the negative criteria, everything that's been put on the record complaining about Mr. Monahan pertained to the truck parts. That's off the table. That's not the application in front of you. We're asking you to please decide the application in front of you and not penalize him for having learned the hard way. Mr. Harms, I also have a clip of his testimony. It's about two minutes and forty seconds long. He stated he was fine with the landscaping business, and I mean no disrespect to anybody. If anybody feels that I have misquoted them, we can listen to the clip. We can give, they'll have their chance to speak. But his concern was that more businesses would be put there. Said he never had a problem with the landscaping business. He was concerned that Mr. Monahan would start another business that would be loud and noisy and have traffic. Again, another admission from the neighbor right next door that he didn't have a concern with the landscaping business. The other concern was regarding expansion of the of the existing hard cover that went towards the embankment and towards the drainage area that's there. It was Mr. Harms who said that the county was dropping off materials from its roadwork. I don't know if Mr. Monahan, did you, you, did you go in the record saying that it was the county who had provided those materials to you? You know, he's a young business owner, a young property owner, and Hunterdon County gave him materials. So I'm not trying to make excuses. I'm trying to ask for some understanding that he learned the lesson the hard way. We have exhibit thirty-five that has been submitting, submitted to you since we were last here, which is email correspondence with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. And I'm going to quickly introduce these four, tell you what these four exhibits are and summarize them because I think you might be interested in your engineer's opinion more than mine or Mr. Monahan's. So with respect to this, to summarize, Mr. Monahan had testified to you previously that he was working with the NJDEP in order to ascertain what they wanted to see about where new materials have been deposited. And Mr. Monahan has pulled them back. He's provided an updated survey. And we have provided to you exhibit thirty-five, which is email correspondence with the NJDEP. We've provided exhibit thirty-six, which is the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's Compliance Assistant Map for thirty-five Rosemont Ringo's Road, where they showed him what they wanted. We have provided exhibit thirty-seven, which is another attachment in that email, which is a guide to preparing a restoration proposal. And we have exhibit thirty-eight, which is email correspondence from the NJDEP. Mr. Monahan has testified that no violation has issued. Mr. Monahan, is it still true that you have never received a violation from the NJDEP?
Correct.
And would you tell us where you currently stand with the NJDEP in terms of your remediation efforts to pull those materials back from where you had deposited them?
All of our efforts were approved by the lady at DEP, and she is continuing to check up on the project for a, for three growing seasons, and this is technically the first growing season, so not until next spring of two thousand and twenty-six will she grant a letter that it's all closing, good to go.
Do you mind if I just ask a quick question?
Of course.
So are there two issues, right? One was the material and one was some plantings. Is that what you're referring to?
Uh, the, it's all one. We had to remove material that wasn't allowed, and then we had to put plantings back in to reestablish the area how it used to be.
And that's in the back of the property?
Correct.
Then wasn't there material put in the front of the property that expanded the driveway, or is that a different issue that I'm misunderstanding?
There wasn't.
Am I misunderstanding that?
They were just worried about
Okay.
the conservation agent behind the building. That's the only thing she was worried about.
And, you know, as a reminder, the board can fashion conditions that makes it comfortable, allowing what Mr. Johnson did to continue, and those can include things such as Mr. Monahan continuing to be reviewed by your engineer, with all updates being provided to the engineer and, you know, documentation of, you know, the compliance with the three-year growing requirement or what have you. So if you see something there that's a concern, let's discuss it. I really want to figure out what will make you comfortable. Now, at this point, I do have more to share on the variance within more testimony from Mr. Monahan, but would you prefer to, on this particular issue with the NJDEP before I move on to hear from your engineer?
Yeah, especially since I was on clear.
When did we get these exhibits?
If we look at the current.
A couple days ago?
No. January
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Okay, so he's just following the DEP's requirements for restoring the damaged front.
That is correct.
So that's, I can confirm that. I mean, beyond that, that fact, he's following what they're telling you to do to restore the damaged area.
Yeah, the areas were characterized as having had film material deposited, which has been pulled back and it's been revegetated under the supervision of the NJDEP. We could look specifically at these emails in more detail. Perhaps you're reading them. I know I prefer to not be read to myself. But, you know, just looking at exhibit thirty-five, good afternoon, Robert. This is from Mate Whitley at NJDEP. I have discussed with my supervisor and he is on board with what we discussed in previous emails. It goes on. She says they would do a notice of violation, but they never did. It goes on and in the correspondence, she provides a map of the property and a narrative of what she requires. That map of the property is exhibit thirty-six. Exhibit thirty-six contains an area that shows the hatched area, which is where material was to be pulled back and removed. Is that correct? Is that what you did?
Correct.
Okay. And then we have exhibit thirty-seven.
No, the hatched area is new disturbance.
To be pulled back, to be, yeah, new disturbance that he removed. That he removed the material and did plantings, correct?
Correct.
When did he remove that, Miss Wiggum?
Uh, whenever last August, September? Maybe even later than that. It was done last fall.
Okay, there's, in the record, if we were to move forward, Ms. Wiggum, to exhibit thirty-eight, in that email, Mr. Monahan emails Ms. Whitley again on October twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-four. And he says to memorialize our discussion during our site meeting today. Let me just make sure, and I'm sorry, this is from Ms. Whitley to Mr. Monahan, and she copies Mr. O'Brien, your engineer. "To memorialize our discussions, the implementation of a restoration plan has been assessed and deemed acceptable. Per our restoration guidance documents, all restoration projects are subject to a monitoring period to ensure that the area revegetates successfully with minimal loss. In order for the restoration to be deemed successful, eighty-five percent of the plantings will need to survive within at least three growing seasons. However, this monitoring period can vary depending upon the scope of the restoration work. Since the restoration work has been completed to our satisfaction, we will begin the monitoring period and will follow up with a site visit after the next growing season or growing period during spring." And then they said that once they see at least eighty-five percent, they'll close this out. They're referring to it as a violation, but there's no actual notice of violation. It's just that it wasn't supposed to be there, so I think it is, you know, it's technically a violation, but there isn't actually a procedural violation that issued. Mr. Monahan worked with them proactively. They never issued one. And he continues to be under the jurisdiction to have this reviewed. The email does go on, but again, you can read it yourself if you need to. It just says, "The department is satisfied thus far with the progress made."
Well, as you know, I visited in November. And this area back here, I didn't see anything pulled back or any plantings directly behind the barn. It was still very plain and and had material out there that was pretty much out of the vein.
The, what's, are you talking about the blue or the yellow area, so I have, so I understand?
Talking about the yellow area that's directly behind the barn.
Everything, everything in the yellows were pulled out, which is in the updated survey, and along the back of the property, you can see that there's no stone or asphalt in that area. And there was actually a type, I forget the direct name, but there was a type of orange one of grasses that were planted every ten and twelve feet on center along the edge of the stone. And then we had to use a special riparian seed mix that she asked me, I had your receipts, everything, how many pounds per square foot had to be used, and all that was done, and then we had to put hay on top of everything. So she had a whole detailed list and all that's been completed, but I had to wait three growing seasons, and spring of two thousand and twenty-five was only the first one, so.
And you're talking about the same area, correct? You're, what you're observing is the same area that
Yes.
That's what I wanted to say.
Directly behind the building here.
And it is under the jurisdiction of the NJDEP?
I can, I can offer up, there was a notice of violation issued
What?
on June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Signed by Maurice Nelson.
Can I see this? Because I did a public records request and did not receive one, and Robert does not have one.
Let me just, I can email this. Can you get a email to you?
Uh.
And this came from Mate herself?
Is it a typical one that cites the provision of the code and requires that he does something to remediate it?
Correct.
Okay, so I mean it's
Certified notice of violation.
So there's, so there's, I'm stand corrected with this regard. This is a procedural correction. It doesn't change the substance of it being under NJDEP's jurisdiction. It doesn't change the substance of the remedy that's required. And if anything, it provides this board more assurances that this is in fact under the jurisdiction of the NJDEP and being reviewed and being addressed to their satisfaction. So present.
That's the only reason they would be out there if it was a violation.
I thought it was unusual, but I didn't receive it.
The violation was in, or the certified, she, the reason that the lady at DEP only came out was because a neighbor had called and complained several times.
Understood, but they issued you this notice of violation letter on June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. And that's how they developed their restoration plan, and I can confirm that from aerial photos that I have from March tenth of this year, there looks like there's areas that are planted and restored in, you know, in agreement with the, the plan that Ms. Wiggum had presented for the hatched areas. It looks like they are following the DEP's requirements. So that's all I can attest to here.
It's a little embarrassing that I didn't have that violation, but I can assure you it doesn't really change anything. I did ask for it. I was told there was no violation. Mr. Monahan, you did not receive that in the certified mail? Okay. So in any event, it doesn't change the substance of the fact that it is being addressed to the NJDEP's satisfaction. It's a matter of outside agency review. And currently, it, there's nothing further that they require immediately except for the opportunity to monitor and continue to confirm that that vegetation takes root. And if it doesn't, I think Mr. Monahan, as a landscape business owner, is well positioned to make sure that the replantings occur. So if there aren't any other further questions on the topic of this one, I wanted to move on to some additional use variance testimony. So exhibit forty-three, if you could please take your attention to exhibit thirty, forty-three. I have some extra copies if anybody needs one. Does anyone in the public want a copy of exhibit forty-three? Who else?
Can I, can I see exhibit forty-two?
Sure. I know.
Thank you. I have a ton of exhibits and I do not see one. I thought it was too orange.
Should have another one here somewhere. Well, I want you to have yours, Robert. I'll tell you what, you and I can share one. How's that? Who else need one?
We could use that.
Well, we can share.
Okay.
Robert, you can share. You guys have one there?
Yes.
You just had it. It's a lot of paper here.
So this is a proposal. This is a proposal for the board to define how, what Mr. Johnson did. And use that for your consideration and allowing Mr. Monahan to do the same. A proposed use variance would be for the storage of commercial landscape, landscape business vehicles, equipment and materials. It would be limited to the, let me just get this into focus here and get this out of my face. The commercial landscape business use is limited to the storage of vehicles, equipment and materials used for a commercial landscaping business. Mr. Monahan's commercial landscape, landscaping businesses, RGM Landscape Design and his RGM Farms, which he testified does landscaping work on farms, are like divisions of this commercial landscaping business. They're essentially one and the same. They are in common ownership and their storage of vehicles, equipment and materials may be treated as one use, so long as they are both in common ownership by Mr. Monahan and are both using the property merely to store vehicles, equipment and materials used for commercial landscaping businesses. The other condition is no other commercial businesses can be permitted at the site. The RGM Truck Parts is registered in Mr. Monahan's name using the property address. It's very common for people who form an LLC to use their address as an address for the administration of the business. However, Mr. Monahan may not operate RGM Truck Parts or any other business other than the one expressly permitted in this request for the use variance. This addresses the concerns that were raised by Mr. Kurtzner and Mr. Harms at the first meeting, where they said they have no problem with the landscape business. Their problem is with other businesses. No onsite customers. All customer work is done offsite. The onsite storage of materials such as mulch and stone is for commercial landscaping business use only. And there is no onsite wholesale or retail sales of materials directly to customers. It's our understanding that this is what Mr. Johnson did. This is what Mr. Monahan is seeking to do. Regarding the NJDEP, Mr. Monahan shall continue to consult with the NJDEP as needed to ensure remediation of disturbed areas as per the NJDEP's Compliance Assistant Map. In the event of any new notices or inspections by the NJDEP regarding the disturbed areas in riparian zone, Mr. Monahan shall inform and provide a copy of such notice to the township's engineer. Mr. Monahan testified to his hours of operation. The proposed condition is that the landscape businesses' hours of operation would be Monday to Friday, seven AM to five PM, Saturday, seven AM to three PM. Mr. Monahan testified regarding vehicles, that currently seven vehicles and six trailers are registered to the commercial landscaping business. He would agree that no more than those seven vehicles and six trailers may be commercially registered at the property address and used for the landscaping business. Nothing herein shall limit Mr. Monahan's ownership of personal vehicles and trailers, which remain subject to Code Section one thirty-two dash two, Storage of Inoperable Vehicles, and Article seven, Recreational Vehicles. In other words, he can have personal vehicles, but he has to comply with your ordinances, and therefore he cannot store inoperable vehicles at the property in, in, in a manner that violates this code. Employees and employee parking. Employee vehicles parked at the property shall not exceed four vehicles. Employees shall only visit the property for the purposes of picking up or dropping off vehicles, equipment or materials. Again, in keeping with Mr. Mon, and Mr. Johnson's use. Now, we showed you some aerial photographs also over the years of Mr. Johnson's use, and Mr. Monahan has testified that it was his understanding that Mr. Johnson was even more intensive than this. And again, the testimony in the record of the very neighbors is they had no problem with Mr. Johnson. Regarding structures, there shall be no new permanent structures added for the commercial use. Accessory residential structures and exterior changes to the residence are subject to zoning permits. The existing carport is a temporary structure, provided it does not have permanent footings, and it shall be situated behind the pole barn and outside of the drainage easement to allow for buffering of same from the roadway. Storage. Commercial landscaping business storage may occur inside the pole barn. Larger machines and attachments may be stored outside of the pole barn in the rear of the property, provided same occurs on existing disturbance. And that would be subject to that remediation. So there's not, not the remediated NJDEP areas, even though that might technically be considered disturbed. The intent here is really on the existing hard cover, let's say. No new disturbance. Property must comply with the state noise standards, the Noise Control Act. That applies to all properties, but it's reiterated here. If this were something that the board would consider as a conditions of a variance, subject to whatever you would want to do to amend it and change it and make it, what would make you comfortable, it would be, in my opinion, wise to note that nothing therein shall limit the residential use of the structure nor any accessory residential uses and structures. And the reminder that accessory residential structures and exterior changes to the residence are subject to zoning permits. And then the proposal that within seventy-five days, there would be a minor site plan application designed to reasonably impact impacts on neighbors, which will show existing conditions and proposed additional landscape buffering. Outdoor storage areas, commercial vehicle and trailer parking layout, and a lighting plan for the rear of the property. At that time, there'd be a completeness determination, and if you did have additional considerations that seemed relevant for site planning, they would certainly be relevant. Mr. Monahan may make application in the name of RGM Landscaping and Design LLC and may request such waivers of application and site plan checklist requirements as are reasonable as determined by the board. When considering the limited scope of the minor site plan, for example, there's no grading proposed, so any such site plan application would probably request, you know, a, some waivers with respect to a grading plan because it's not applicable, right? This exhibit now moves on to some summaries of the key testimony. And this was all taken from the first hearing already in the record unless otherwise indicated on here. There's just one exception because we submitted some more recent materials, but Mr. Monahan reiterated that he purchased the property on July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I think the copy that I was provided of this is missing some things. Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, you said that's June, right?
Did I say July? Uh, June, yeah. June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you. Mr. Monahan provided testimony regarding this being a commercial landscaping business used since nineteen ninety. Mr. Monahan owns RGM Landscaping and Design. He's been operating that business since the fall of two thousand and seventeen. It offers lawn cutting, mulching, shrub trimming, cutting and planting services. All services are provided offsite. Mr. Monahan testified that when he purchased and occupied the property, he believed that the landscaping business was a continuation of Mr. Johnson's legally permitted use and a legally permitted structure. I'm not going to rehash this because we've already addressed it tonight. RGM Farms. Mr. Monahan testified that Mr., he also owns RGM Farms, which provides services similar to the landscaping business, but to farm properties rather than more typically serviced landscapes. For example, he testified the edges of the fields where farmers cut hay are surrounded by trees, and Mr. Monahan is hired by local farmers to clear brush along the perimeter of those fields, which allows the farmers to maintain the same size field. Mr. Monahan considers this farm-focused landscaping business use the same as RGM Landscaping and Design. The storage of vehicles, equipment and materials used for a commercial landscaping business. Mr. Monahan seeks an approval that would allow the landscaping business to continue under both of these names, the farm's name and the landscaping name. Mr. Monahan, is this all true and accurate so far in summarizing?
Correct.
Something to add there? Okay, and of course, the board will have a chance to ask you questions about this. He also owns the truck parts business, RGM Truck Parts LLC, where he sells used truck beds that are rust-free. He initially used the pole barn for his truck parts business. It was deemed a violation and he discontinued the use. His application is only to permit the landscaping business at the property, not the truck parts business. Mr. Monahan is not seeking approvals relating to his truck parts business, which has not operated the property, just registered at the property. There is no new inventory or storage of truck parts on the property. Mr. Monahan also does not intend to expand the landscaping business. I reiterate the NJDEP. We note that he's provided the record, the additional exhibits that I've already provided to you. And please note here that I have been corrected. There has been a formal violation. That is a mistake in number nineteen. Customers. There are no customers on the property. All customers of the landscape business are located offsite. Aside from personal residential use, the property is used only to store the vehicles, equipment and materials necessary to service offsite customers of the landscape business. Mr. Monahan testified, Monday through Friday, he has seven employees who work in crews of two to three people. On Saturday, three employees work in one crew. The hours of operation, he testified to at the first hearing, Monday through Friday, seven to five, Saturday, seven to three. At the first hearing, Mr. Monahan explained that his employees arrive at the property, load the trucks and trailers, and are usually out of the property by seven fifty AM. They are back around five PM on Monday through Friday or around three PM on Saturday. Weather impacts businesses. Sometimes due to weather, employees begin on a delayed schedule, leading to varied and possibly later return times during such inclement weather. Regarding parking, Mr. Monahan testified that there are fifteen to twenty parking spots. Most of them are empty. Four employee vehicles are regularly parked near the pole barn. Employees will carpool, and therefore only four parking spots are used for the seven employees. He testified that the carport was installed in the summer of two thousand and twenty-three. He testified to the vehicles on the property, with five of them being registered to the landscaping business, including pickup trucks and dump trucks. Three are used on a daily basis. Two trucks are also registered to RGM Farms. He has various trailers for landscaping business. There's currently six, and he has two personal trailers. He testified to having three personal vehicles, including one SUV parked in a garage every night and two stored outside by the pole barn. He testified to having various dirt bikes and quads. Some are stored in the garage and others are stored in the metal pole barn. He testified that some basic vehicle maintenance and repairs are done in the pole barn. We're almost done. Regarding the storage, the property is commercially used to store equipment. Most of the equipment is stored inside the pole barn, except for what cannot fit inside the building. Larger equipment is stored outside, such as trucks, trailers and larger machines and attachments. Smaller equipment is stored inside the pole barn, such as rakes, shovels, weed whackers and the like. Materials such as mulch and stone are stored outside. There are There are no storage containers. There is a dumpster in the back, outside the pole barn, with a closed lid. Storage in the pole barn generally includes, for commercial purposes, the storage of smaller equipment, such as lawnmowers, weed whackers, and blowers, snowplow, uh, 15 snowplow, oh, the actual plow itself. Hedge trimmers, shovels, rakes, grass seed, and starting fertilizer are stored in bags inside the building. There are no liquid fertilizers or pesticides. There is no pesticide license. The storage personnel includes items such as a few quads, miscellaneous tools and parts, and spare parts for the landscaping business. So again, this is a summary of every, all of this is from the first hearing with the exception of the new NJDEP exhibits. I really don't like listening to myself speak this much, but I thought this was an efficient way to bring you current, because it's been a long time since that hearing, and a lot has happened. At this time, it would be appropriate for me to just turn you over and for you to ask any questions you have of Mr. Monahan relative to this. And I just want to point out again that he only wants to do what Mr. Johnson was able to do for decades, and you can make this what you need to be comfortable to allow him to do what Mr. Johnson did through your conditions. This is a start in order to try to make that work easier.
I'm actually wondering whether it would be better to hear from your professionals or our professionals before we start asking questions because I'm thinking you might, unless there's anybody who's dying to ask a question, I think just in terms of time, it's very possible that...
It's a great idea. A hundred percent on board. Let's do it. Yeah. So you can...
So then we will ask Mr. John, I mean, Mr. Monahan questions at the same time as the professionals later.
You can switch the chair back or switch.
We'll switch.
How are you?
Hi, yeah.
And you're still under oath, right?
I still am.
Still, still an expert.
This is good? This is good? Okay, I'm good. Thanks. So I'm here to talk about the application from a, a planning standpoint as it goes, relates to the variances. Ms. Voight and Mr. Monahan did a great job of kind of summarizing, bringing us all back to this point. And I think that I've done a very good job of providing a kind of nice neat little box that we can put the, the use in, and I think that's a, a good opportunity for the board to take. So in terms of the, the relief, the specific relief requested, under your Section 92-91B, principal permitted uses in the Amwell Valley Agricultural District, landscaping, the storage of landscaping vehicles, equipment, and materials is not a permitted use. So we require a D1 use variance, as the board knows, to make a use variance finding and support that. There's really five things that we need to talk about. The first is called particular suitability, is the property somehow particularly suited for use in question. Secondly, does the proposed use further the purposes of municipal land use law, i.e. special reasons? Third is the enhanced, what we call the Medici proof, which is basically why wasn't this permitted by ordinance? And that, that's relates to the, really, what is the use variance case? Medici BPR from South Plainfield, 1987, actually predates my career. And, and then, as with all of your variances, we have to satisfy negative criteria. Does the proposal have a substantial detriment to the public good? And can the variance be granted without a substantial impairment to the zone plan and to the zoning ordinance? And zone plan is, is determined is to be your master plan. So I'll run through them kind of one by one. In terms of particular suitability, we have a site that is somewhat unique within this immediate area of the Amwell Valley Agricultural District by its topography, location, and existing improvements. The location on Rosemont Ringo's Road provides good access along a significant local and regional road for the business, business access that is a little more than a quote-unquote residential street. The shape of the property actually places a large flag portion of the lot significantly behind the adjacent residences. And for example, if you, if you were to look at the survey, any of the surveys, what is this? I just want to refer to the right number. Exhibit 32, so you see that we have a 200-foot-wide pole, if you will, which we would be compliant in your ag district for lots between one and a half and, and 10 acres. And then we have another substantial portion that is behind that. So again, the homes that are along Rosemont Ringo's in that area are all kind of in a lineup by the front. So this places the lot significantly behind the adjacent residences along Rosemont Ringo's Road, allowing isolation and screening if additional screening is desired by the board. The presence of, as, as the board is well aware from the site, from numerous aerials provided with our application package, including Exhibit 36, the high, high-tension power lines are shown in the DEP compliance plan. So the presence of these high tension, high-tension power lines does not suggest, if you will, a rural bucolic idyllic setting. Their presence cannot be ignored. They are significantly tall, significantly wide, and have a large presence in those rear yards. So again, it's not a quote-unquote bucolic rural setting. And this facility that is there is not proposing, in my opinion, a significant change to that setting. The topography of the site is somewhat helpful in that it slopes from Rosemont Road, Ringo's Road to the back, to the stream that's behind. Front to back place in the facility at the rear is significantly lower than the surrounding residence, again, allowing for isolation and screening if, if that's desired. And then finally, the presence of the improvements cannot be ignored or discounted. The improvements themselves that are placed there were placed with permits and, and are legally established improvements. So with, especially with the pullback, quote-unquote, in accordance with the DEP compliance plan, that, those improvements are, quote-unquote, legally established. So their presence is there, and that lends to particular suitability to use this property for the use. The present, you know, we're not imposing new improvements on an area for a use. We're just using existing improvements, albeit in a way that they've been used for the last 35 years. But you can't discount the presence of those existing improvements. In terms of the, the positive criteria, I'd submit to you there are two that are specific. I apologize, I do read them. G to provide for sufficient space in an appropriate location for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses, and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements in order to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. Again, we think this site, it is not big enough to be a farm. It is just shy of five acres at 4.8 acres. If it were a farm, these would be uses that are typically associated with the farm. So it wouldn't be untoward for them to be there. We believe there's sufficient space for them, and we think that particularly with the DEP oversight that has been, that has been provided, that we're certainly meeting all of our environmental requirements. Mr. Monahan will certainly be in compliance with all requisite environmental laws regarding his various materials, et cetera. And then M to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view towards lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of the land. And in this instance, this is kind of a twofold purpose of the land use law. One is recognizing that land use law, for better or worse, in New Jersey, we wear about, we serve about 10 masters, whether it be municipal county, DRCC, DEP, various ag boards, et cetera, and soil erosion. All of those have to come together, and all of those different requirements have to be met. So again, you're required to hit every single one. And again, the, the view is that this, this doesn't cost as much as possible, and that it doesn't, it doesn't drain everybody of every single nickel. So we think this is an efficient use of the land to use an existing facility for this use as opposed to some other new greenfield facility. We think that's a more efficient use of the land. That would be an appropriate finding for the board. In terms of the Medici discussion, I think it's, it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a nuanced discussion. The challenge of the Amwell Valley Agricultural District is, is wide and varied, I guess, over its, over its history. I guess that dates back to 1991. Obviously, single-family uses, agriculture uses, and farms are the two primary uses of there. But over, over time, since its initial introduction and adoption, additional uses that relate to the use of the properties have been added, kind of slowly and steadily over the 30-plus years that it's been in place to provide for things that support the farming community. And there are things that support the farming community kind of in, in two or three different ways. One way is, is the specific uses, the agriculture uses, et cetera. The second way is to provide for housing, et cetera, for the workers. So having additional accessory apartments for the workers, having affordable, and then most recently, you've actually added affordable housing onto the, onto that cadre of list of uses that you have there, again, to meet the ever-changing needs of the township. Additionally, wireless telecommunications are added there. Antique shops, you know, how an antique shop relates to a farm, I'm not quite certain. But again, there are types of things that get added, one, in response to some requests, and two, they reflect the changing needs of the community and how, how they continue. In terms of accessory uses, off-street parking and loading obviously is permitted, farm stands, all the, all of the renewable energy things. And renewable energy, telecommunication, wireless telecommunication, solar, all those things, they're all included, one, to provide, like in the case of renewable energy, some instances, the actual energy for the farms. But the other thing that is provided as part of these uses that also supports the farming are some of these things that produce revenue, whether it be cell, whether it's cell towers, whether it's solar farms, it's antique shops, you know, those things that produce revenue that support the farming. The farm stands, you know, are again, an example of that, that's, you know, quote-unquote, a quasi-resident, retail use, that again, supports, supports the farms. And so again, that support of the farms is, is a somewhat broad, broad brush type of thing. Microbreweries are, I guess, the most recent additional use that's provided there as an accessory. I guess you can brew beer with some of the things you grow on the farm. And then we have a long list of conditional uses, again, that, that also talk about housing facilities for farm workers, more wireless telecommunication, more solar of different scale, public utilities, et cetera, such as the towers that are behind. So again, it recognizes this broad, this broad range of uses, and it recognizes them, most importantly, within 10 acres. And I think it's when you get to the 10 acres that this use, while it's not specifically permitted, I consider it kind of farm-adjacent. And if this were on a farm, if this were a 10-acre property that had a barn and, you know, and the various, you know, had the various farming equipment that you use, and as we talked about last time, you know, farms are maintained and operated and tilled and worked and all those things generally from, from other places as well as the farm itself. So it's not untoward to think that equipment that were parked at, on one property would then be used at another. And again, I think that this type of, so on the farm, you know, with, with the, with the, the farm use, et cetera, if there were, you know, seven trucks and, six trucks and seven, seven trucks and six trailers, and some equipment, you wouldn't blink if, if it were on a farm. But in this instance, it's, it's a, it's a different standalone property, and we get put in a different category. So for that, that's the reason why I think that the governing body didn't regulate it. I think they didn't, they didn't feel that they needed to because by and large with the, with the, with the agricultural, the Amwell Valley Agricultural District, it's much larger properties, whether there's six farm vehicles, or 12 farm vehicles, or 18 farm vehicles, doesn't matter. It comes back to a, you know, so again, this type of individual use in and of itself really wasn't on their radar, in my opinion. So I believe the regulation was not thought to be necessary. And then, in this instance, we have a use that was on the property without issue for 33 years. It was there. We have testimony from neighbors who've been there, have known Mr. Johnson for 30 years, never had an issue with, with that use. It wasn't until, as Ms. Voight laid out, that the use changed hands and an additional use was added. And as she said, Mr. Monahan learned his lesson, the additional use is gone, enforcement works, due process works, you know, God bless America, and, you know, but, you know, now we have, you know, this specific use getting the scrutiny that it is. So again, I, you know, I think these, these types of uses exist in town, they, they haven't been an issue for 30 years. We ended up with a specific issue here that we are, that we are reviewing it, and, you know, as, as this comes out in your annual report, I'd expect the governing body will, you know, take it up next year, decide, you know, how they're going to, how they're going to address it in the future. In terms of our negative criteria, again, there's, there's two, and these are in all of your variances. Can it be granted without substantial detriment of the public good? And does the proposal substantially impair the purpose and intent of the, the zone plan and the zoning ordinance? So here we have an instance where the proposed use, as testified by our neighbors, has not been an issue for over 30 years. It's a landscape business appropriate for a rural area. It's an existing structure that can accommodate the use, can accommodate the things inside, except for the vehicle parking, equipment parking, and some of the materials. The site has existing improvements and significant setbacks to accommodate the use, and is oriented to the rear and the bottom of the site and to the power lines that are behind. It is a relatively low-impact use. We'd heard about four employee cars coming in the morning, four employee cars leaving in the afternoon, and we have seven, seven total trucks, and we have three crews leaving in the morning, three crews coming back in the afternoon. So very, very low impact in terms of overall traffic, et cetera. Not, you know, really, of no impact or import to Rosemont Ringo's Road. You know, you're talking about, you know, one trip every, you know, 10 minutes or 15 minutes in the AM or PM peak, very, very low traffic generation. In terms of your, your zone plan and your master plan, the master plan in its 2023 reexamination recognizes that a new land use element is necessary for the Amwell Valley Agricultural District, and that this element should focus on the needs of farmers in the township that will help ensure that farming remains an important and significant industry. And that, you know, economic development issues would be suitable and appropriate for East Amwell and recommend changes that would be appropriate on working farms in the township. So again, I think that as the governing body takes, this planning board and the governing body takes up, takes up the recommendations of your reexamination report, I think you'll have the opportunity to do that. And it makes kind of continuing recommendations to continue to evaluate your ordinances in terms of what are the 2025 uses that are current, that need to occur in those areas, and that support farmers. And we heard testimony from Mr. Monahan that part of his business does support farm... And we heard testimony from Mr. Monahan that part of his business does support farmers. And part of his business supports the community, you know, particularly in the community of large lots, et cetera. While some take some joy out of mowing their own lawn, et cetera, when the properties get very large, that becomes something that, that isn't necessarily positive. I mean, for myself, I, I took a lot of pride in mowing my own lawn until I was fifty-six years old. And, and then when I started my own business, my wife decided that it would be much better if I spent my time billing somebody instead of outside making sure that my lawn had the right striping on it. And I hired a lawn service last year. So, you know, but as I, I do projects that take a long time, so there's certain satisfaction out of mowing your lawn and being done as opposed to projects that take months and months and, and sometimes years. So, I think that, you know, provides a service that is important for residents as well in the township. In terms of the purposes of the Amwell Valley District, it's to encourage land use patterns which enhance the township, to retain farmland and protect and preserve agricultural activity, to protect and promote the continuation of farming in East Amwell, where farming is a valuable component of the local economy, to implement the goals of the amended master plan by protecting agricultural lands and promoting agriculture as a valuable component of the local economy. There are additional elements that talk about protecting soils, to limit non-farm-related residential development, and to support the preservation of existing farm operations and limit conflicts between agricultural and non-agricultural uses by encouraging separation from residential uses. So, again, there are the purposes of the ag district. In no way are, is this proposal to provide for the park, the storage, parking of vehicles, storage of equipment and materials, in no way is it impairing that intent. It's, it's, has literally no impact on what that intent is. Again, the proposal's a low-intensity non-residential use in a one-story building. It is certainly similar to permitted farm uses. The building is formed like in size and scale and certainly does not impair the intent and purpose of, of the zoning ordinance. As we said, the, the proposed use is not going to impair it. It's a farm, it's a farm-adjacent use, as I called it, on a unique property adjacent to a major utility corridor. The master plan recognizes, recognizes review and evaluation of other uses, and I think having this type of use occupy an existing improved property does not impair that plan. The last piece, and Ms. Voight mentioned this briefly as well, one of the, one of the supported reasons of a board granting a variance, whether it be a D variance or a C variance, is the opportunity for the board to impose reasonable conditions on that use. And I think that the applicant has proposed a list of reasonable conditions that the board could, could adopt and could supplement in any, in the ways that they believe is reasonable. And that would have an opportunity to, to put it in a, in a package that you as a board believe is acceptable to the township. And I think that is an appropriate use of your zoning board powers. That would be consistent and keep that control within the township. I think that that's a valuable thing. I think it's an opportunity for you to control the way you want this use to be. And I would ask the board to make the requisite findings for the D1 use variance that I believe are appropriate based on the positive and negative criteria we talked about. I believe the relief can be granted without a detriment to the public good or an impairment to your zone plan or your master plan. And I'm available for your questions.
Can I hear from, I'd like to hear from our professionals before we open it up to questions. Do you have questions of him or you have some?
No, no questions. I think when the board's ready, you know, we can talk about the criteria and just, so I'm new to the board this year, right? So, I, I think my job as your consulting planner is to really help frame the issues, frame the criteria. You're essentially judging testimony that Mr. Taikina just provided to see if it fits within that framework and gives you the ability to grant the variance. So, I think after the board has asked their questions, you know, when you're kind of ready to deliver, I think both Sharon and I can give you advice in that regard.
I have a question for Mr. Monahan, actually, no.
Okay.
If I could do that, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Exhibit eight is an aerial photo from twenty fifteen. Do you have that?
Eight?
That was your exhibit. And I'm just looking at along the side of the building where the retaining wall is. Currently, there are bins there now with material in it, and I didn't see those in those aerials or any of the ones before that. So, I'm just questioning, you put those in?
I did, yes, sir.
What year did you do that?
Uh, twenty twenty-two or early two thousand twenty-three.
After you bought the property? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that there were no bins shown in that, that aerial or the other ones you had included as exhibits? So, those material storage bins were added in twenty twenty-two?
Correct.
And would they be on the survey?
They're not.
They're not shown on the survey yet either.
They're shown in this picture.
They're not permanent structures, so I don't think they would have to be on the survey?
I don't know that I would agree with that.
I think, yeah, even if it's not permanent, it's storing materials, so that would be prudent to the operation of the business, so.
They certainly could be shown on an updated survey if that would please the board.
I just wanted to clarify that they weren't there on the previous use, and they have storage bins that are on the site now, that's all.
It, it does show them on this.
On the DEP?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you show them on any other aerials you see?
Okay, for the record, can you just say where that's from?
It shows them on exhibit thirty-six.
Okay.
That shows the DEP zones that were disturbed, and it's an aerial photograph.
And just for the record, does it have a date on it? Or not?
There was an attachment to the June twenty twenty-four email correspondence. The photo itself is not dated, but I think that gives you a ballpark idea of the timing of the photo.
All right, well, we know it's exhibit thirty-six, so.
Thank you, that, that's all I have.
Questions from the board, I think we'll do this sort of individually. We can start with, who wants to start? Usually start from the left.
I'll start. This is exhibit number seven, which is the map of when, a week before you bought the place, correct? There's a couple of things I was wondering about. The one thing on this picture, there's no sheds in the back.
They were taken down prior, a couple of weeks prior to the closing date.
And do you know why?
They were Mr. Johnson's property and they were not permanent structures.
Okay.
They're temporary.
Because on the basis of those structures, you said that you can build a shed that's, this takes up the same footage as where those structures were?
Uh, yes, that's what the West Amwell zoning officer had told me. It's all, it's always the same total square footage. If I had, there was three smaller ones there, and now there is currently three larger ones.
Well, are they there or do you still have the?
The three smaller ones?
Temporary one that's shown on this.
That's exhibit, that's the one she hinted?
This is exhibit thirty-two, which is the sound survey.
That is exactly, it's, it's currently sitting in the exact same spot where it is on the survey you see there.
Okay, because here you had the building, the metal shed right here against the neighbor's property.
Correct, we put that in the back, and then during the process of a DEP, we had to move that metal shed or carport, it's not permanent, so that we were able to get machines and trucks back there to dig the unwanted fill-out.
Okay.
So, where is the metal shed now?
Up against the retaining wall.
And it's the, this is the same, this is the one that's been moved around and it's the same size?
We, we moved it, yeah, we moved it, that's just smaller in size, total square, total square footage is smaller than the three that were there on that, that survey or that exhibit.
But just from my understanding, it's been a while, it's a temporarily, temporary structure that you've moved around, it's a shed, maybe, maybe, I don't, maybe not.
I, I moved it once because.
Oh, you moved it once, okay.
Yeah, I moved it once because we had to for new DEP.
And this is where you're planning to keep it?
I can, I was gonna put it back, I just haven't.
Well, right now, it's nineteen point five feet from the property line.
Correct.
Correct?
That's where it is now, yes, I, I have not moved it.
Yeah, so it's too close to the property line. It's quite a tall shed?
Uh, yes.
And houses a truck and a car?
Uh, there is a piece of machine in there, a couple of snowplows, and there is a salt spreader inside there.
Okay, so it's, it's a fairly good-sized shed.
Yeah, it's, but it, it is smaller than combined square footage, square footage is smaller than.
The sheds that were there then, but were there previously.
Yeah, I think there's another exhibit that shows the three of them.
Yes, there are other.
But now that one was a week before I bought the property and they, they were not there.
All right, the other question I think Rob was asking about is you got a permit for a retaining wall.
Yes.
And with the retaining wall, you built up the, these things over here where you have material stored outside.
Yes.
And previously, when Fred had the property, there were no outside materials stored?
There was not, I, I stored mulch there, and when I, when I looked at the property prior to purchasing it, there was not mulch there at the time.
Okay, and, and there's also mulch stored sometimes over on the other side of the building outside?
There was mulch there once because when we first built the wall, we went over the property line, so I moved the mulch from the bins to the other side to move the wall back, then put it directly back.
Okay, one, one concern I have about this mulch being stored outside is we just had to close our grit yard because it was determined that the mulch there might pollute the stream that was nearby.
Okay.
So, I, I do have some concerns about that. The other question that I have to ask is about, do you have a gas tank and a diesel tank there?
Yes, they are, I, I, I would get wrong, but they're double-walled tanks so that if one does leak, there's another, they're certified and all the other.
And you pump gas from those into your trucks?
I did, yes.
And can there be spills there?
There could be, but we actually have the speedy dryer kitty litter that we use to clean it up.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause that's another environmental concern I have is having gas and diesel on the property.
I understand.
Is that new, the gas and diesel? Do you know that Mr. Johnson, to your knowledge?
He had metal tanks, I don't know, was it, he asked me if I wanted them when I bought the property, and I said no, and they were removed prior to me purchasing the property.
And are you required to have a license to have those?
Uh, you do not, but they have, they have.
They're portable?
They're portable, yeah.
I just, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I can pick them up and move them.
They're portable versus, my understanding is they're different if they're portable versus like what you would envision, like a fixed tank with a pump and all of that, but these are like portable containers holding a larger volume than you would have for like a residential portable container.
But they're used to pump, it, it gets in the trucks.
You take these with you to fill them up or does somebody come by to fill them up?
They get, they get filled, they, they don't move. A truck comes and he fills them.
Do you have more questions, Candice?
Yep.
Mike? Ken? No? I don't really. No, yeah, no, no questions?
I'm good, thank you.
I guess my, I just have one sort of overall question, and there's been a lot of, for lack of a better word, representation, that, that your use isn't, I don't want to put words into your mouth, but it's no more, no more intensive than the previous, the use of the previous owner. Is that what your, I guess my question is, is that your representation? Is that what you're saying, is in your, in your point of, from your point of view, it's no more intensive?
I have less employees than Mr. Johnson did when he ran his business.
Okay.
So, if that's how you want to be less intense versus more intense, then, yes, I, 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 I just have employees plus me.
Okay. What about the outsourced, the storage of outside materials or the number of, amount of equipment?
There, like, there, there is mulch there now, so that I, I saw, I, I did put a bit there.
And then, you know, some of this goes to sort of the overall, how do I, overall impact on the, on the, in the neighborhood and the zone, right? So, it's one thing to have a landscaping business, it's also to have a landscaping business where you might also then have a very intensive hobby use. And while I know that your hobby use is, is separate and not constrained by the, by the zone, to what extent can, and then maybe this is a question to our planner or to the planners, to what extent does that hobby use, which to my, in my view, from what I'm reading, feels, feels impactful, right? Equipment, noise, quads, how does, how, or can, or should we consider that in, as we consider the variance? Or are they, is it not to be considered? Just as the overall impact on the, on the land, on the, on the, on the four-point-eight acres?
Part of your assessment is whether the site is particularly suited to the use. I think you have to take into consideration what else is occurring at the property.
Okay.
So, it, it certainly goes to a measure of intensity, you know, of overall use, and I think that's appropriate for the board.
Okay.
But we, you know, we might want to have some testimony from Mr. Monahan on, on that part of what he does on the property other than the landscaping business, if that's a concern.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Monahan.
What's a few, Mr. Monahan? You said you have a few quads.
I have, I have three. Two, two were technically.
And when you say quads, what are they?
Uh, one's a player's quad and two were just small, like little dirt bikes.
Excuse me, you have?
They're small dirt bikes, they're, it's two wheels, yeah.
About four wheels.
They're, one is four wheels and one is, and two are two wheels. There's three total units, though.
How much noise do they make?
Very rarely ride them on the property. Start them up, put them on the trailer and they.
That was my question.
They're, I personally, I personally don't think they're that loud. If you get on the gas and you're riding around, they're loud, but they're not ridden on the property.
And you, and you were also doing other things with this, with that?
Just facing them, working on them, yeah.
Sort of normal stuff that?
If anyone works on their car in the driveway, it's no, no different.
Okay.
I also noticed that you said you have, there were fifteen snowplow, snowplows.
Yes.
Snowplows attached to anything?
Some attached to trucks and some attached to subcontractors that work for me in the snow. So, we bring the snowplow to the snow site and they use their machine on.
How many snowplows were on, on, was the previous owner in the snowplow business that you say doing the same thing he did?
I, I can't speak for.
Did he have fifteen snowplows?
I am, I am unaware.
You also mentioned that, that in terms of trucks, trailers, large machines and attachments, most of them, you said, are kept, cannot fit inside the building, so they're all outside the building. I'm, I'm reading your stor, your storage.
Yes, yes.
This is a major storage facility. And you have four, and you have four point nine acres, and you do have a residence, do you live there?
I did.
And you were, you made improvements to the house, did you not, you were, and so to the pooling?
We should pull out.
And not took the pool out.
Took the pool out.
Correct.
And what, what did you, what you made other additions?
Uh, we took down the deck that was falling off, put a new deck up.
Put a new deck up, okay.
And then we took the pavers and the concrete in the pool that was there and put new pavers in the same area.
The residential improvements?
Correct. And we redid the front walkway.
Anything else we could add, Marjorie? Going back to, that's, I just have.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but I just wanted to say that Mr. Robert, or Mr. Monahan would be willing to give up the mulch storage if that was necessary for the board to, to add variance.
Is there, is there mulch, is there any other storage there?
There's a small pile of stone that can come out here, it's not.
That's not, okay, um, I just wanted to circle back to something that, uh, Ca, Candace Wiggum had asked about. Is, are all the temporary and permanent structures within the, you know, required setbacks? From the property lines, from the riparian zone, from the, you know, all of those, to your knowledge?
According, according to D E P and the West Am well zoning officer, when I asked him about it, yes.
So Ty, Ty Kana?
Ty Kina.
Ty Kina, I was, have, have you looked at that? Can you state that, that everything there is within the required setbacks?
Not currently.
Okay.
It can be, I think, I, I think the offer was, address the use issue, and then within seventy-five days of the adoption of a resolution, come back with a minor site plan. That, one does all the math, two, gets everything in the right spot, gets all the setbacks.
Fair enough, fair enough.
That puts it all in a neat box for the board.
Okay, fair enough.
The pole barn likely wouldn't be moved.
Pole barn's not gonna be moved.
Pre-existing structure being used, but, so it's really the, um, the other structures that are on the property, like the retaining wall, the temporary, the shed, um, the bins, storage bins, if they stayed, or if the mulch had to go, that wouldn't be relevant anymore.
I ju, I just had a clarification, when, when you said West Amwell, you, he, the zoning officer worked in both towns, right?
Well, when, when this first started, yes, they shared.
Okay.
He was wor, he was in his capacity as East Amwell.
He was just at West Amwell, but he was working for East Amwell.
Sorry, this is Kevin Roden, okay, was it German or Zane?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Any other questions for members of the board before I go to the public? Is there anything, anything, before we go to the public, anything else you wanna add?
Yeah, my question.
May I have a motion to open to the public?
Make your motion.
In a second, all in favor? This is, we're open to the public for questions of Mr. Monahan, Mr. Ty Kina, I have like some mental.
You hit it perfectly.
Just que, just questions up to their testimony, um, if there's general questions, general comments, that will come later. So just if you have questions about their testimony. Mr. Kirchner.
Where do I go?
Uh, can you, um, Rob, would you mind sharing with Mr. Kirchner?
You can come over here and.
He won't be on camera, yeah. What's, what's the general plan for that? Yeah, we have an, we have.
You can still see him on camera.
Would this, would this sit on the podium?
It might.
Well, then we won't have it, if we have to answer the questions. Yeah. We have a better plan for this. We're good. Sorry, everybody, guys. Everybody's got a microphone, probably. Okay. Except for Mr. Kyle. Yeah.
Robert Kirchner, one thirty-eight Boss Roads, Stockton, New Jersey, I've been here before. Many questions, many.
This is, sir?
Let me start with, uh, well, to begin with, my property is contiguous to Mr. Monahan's. Mr. Monahan's property is nestled between two homes on either side, six oh four in the front, a stall farm in the back, and mine on the side. I brush hog my fields, um, I'm the one who's responsible for calling the D E P. The stream begins on my property and goes on to his. Uh, question number one, I was in a quick check the other day, and I saw a truck outside. Four works, four workers inside, red sweatshirts, pretty much the color of your attorneys. Sweatshirt said R J M, two of them said R J M Landscaping, Ringos, New Jersey. Two others said R J M Truck Parts, Ringos, New Jersey. This was this past week, rather curious.
The, the, the.
I mean, new, new, new sweatshirts?
Right, then?
Can you explain that?
The R J M Landscape and Design sweatshirts say Branchburg, New Jersey on the back, not Ringos, and the R J M Truck Parts sweatshirts do say Ringos, because that's the registered address that we stated before. I gave them sweatshirts when I moved there, um, I didn't know that it was not allowed for employees to wear them, so if, if any of my friends wore them, are they not allowed to wear sweatshirts to a quick check?
I just find it rather curious that, in light of the circumstances, you're in, you're in a fishbowl, and you think it's appropriate for your workers to wear these sweatshirts, and let me add another thing. The, you think it's funny? I don't, and because I don't think it's anything funny, I didn't think the D E P thought it was funny, what you did with the stream.
Mr. Kirchner, question?
Let me finish, excuse me, let me finish.
Questions to him only.
At any given time, I see vehicles in that parking lot that have nothing to do with landscape. I've seen vehicles along six oh four with signs on trucks that you're selling, can you explain that?
Am I, so what, what are you asking me? Can you say any, any questions forward instead of?
Oh, I, I have a number of questions, but, but I'm literally making the accusation.
Okay.
I find it hard to believe that you've stopped with the truck parts, I find it hard to believe.
I, there is no truck parts at the property, I do not sell any truck parts at the property.
There's a pattern here, Mr. Monahan pretty much does what he thinks is appropriate, whether or not it conforms to ordinances. I had a picture that I was gonna share with you in reference to, what I'll call the infamous wall. When the wall went up, and I'm, and I'm pleased that you folks picked up on this, when the wall went up, I spoke to Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, can we just keep it to questions right now?
I'm sorry?
Can we just keep it to questions right now, 'cause you are testifying.
Oh.
And you will have a chance.
Strictly questions.
Strictly questions.
Strictly questions.
Oh.
About the testimony in the right.
About the testimony that was already given.
So offer an opportunity to speak later?
Yes, he will.
Okay, fine.
Yes.
Any other questions, Mr.? Anyone else in the audience have questions of Mr. Monahan? Going once, twice, without objection, we are closed to the public, questions for Mr. Monahan and Mr. Ty Kina. Got it, I'll, I'll get it. Okay.
You're perfect.
Thank you. I'm glad, okay, um. Any other questions from the board? I can open it for general, to the public, I can hear, we could hear from our, if there's anything new you wanna add, from either of our professionals, otherwise I'll go back up to the public and take the, here from the public.
I did have one.
Yep, go ahead.
So I recently watched the videos, uh, spent a lot of time on last few days, and one of the things I noticed is there's a bit of a conflicting, um, concept of how many employees used to work for the landscaping, so Johnson, previous, previous, uh, less or less he, uh, after he sold the property, but if the, um, it seems, that's a, that's a unique property, so if somebody is looking to buy that property, it's gonna be a pretty finite number of people who are interested in it, just based on the way it's situated, with that particular structure in the back. So it seems like he might have an incentive to say that he had a lot more employees, and he really did, uh, to help make the property more sellable and more attractive to you, I'm not calling him a liar, it's not, I'm trying to assert here, but it seemed to me, just as a, a newcomer to the situation, that, some people were testifying that he had a lot fewer employees than that, and that, I don't know, it just seems like that's not really an established fact, that, that you have more or less employees than he.
The person that told me how many employees he had was not Mr. Johnson itself, it was one of his employees that used to work for him.
Okay.
So, and Mr. Johnson wasn't the one selling me the property, it was the pro, the Proctor family.
Correct, he was, I know he was leasing the property.
Correct.
But, you know, you never know what's going on behind, yeah, if they're.
Yep, I understand.
Yep. And this is where putting the conditions on a variance, you know, that you have the most control over the variance outcome, um, if, if that were the remedy here, uh, because you get to put the conditions on it, and if those conditions are not complied with, it is a violation. So you control, you control the narrative there.
Yes.
Anything else you wanna add before I open to the public again? May I have a motion to open to the public for comments related to this application?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second, all in favor, no objection, we are open to the public, now, Mr. Kirchner, you can.
Did you ever swear, did it get sworn in at the last time? He was sworn in, all right, we have recollection that he was sworn in, so you're still under a.
All right, part two. There are professionals here, perhaps someone can clarify this for me. I have a real estate license, my profession actually is an educational consultant, but I have been doing real estate for twenty-seven years. When the infamous wall went up, I spoke to Mr. Wozniak. It, it, it never was just the wall. Now, granted, it's on the screen here, these bins can be moved. Right on my property line, the shed was in the back, we spoke about it last summer, and supposedly it was moved because there was a lot of work being done in the back, when, um, material was being moved, because material was within ten feet of the stream. At that time, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Monahan said that it was temporary, it's a, it's a good sized shed. It's only maybe ten feet from the property line. Now, again, I'm a layperson, I just find it, I'm looking at the screen now, I just find it hard to believe that that's appropriate. Perhaps this is something that you will address. The attorney mentioned my reference to Fred Johnson, Fred and I went back thirty years, he actually farmed on land. I maintain Mr. Johnson will never, uh, Mr. Monahan will never be Mr. Johnson. Fred was rather low key, he only had a handful of employees, his foreman, Ron Benitez, is my neighbor. Mr. Monahan's operation is, is larger in size than what Fred had. And I go back thirty years with Fred. What I really wanna speak to here is you have a master plan, two-thirds of East Amwell is farmland. I maintain, Mr. Monahan doesn't belong where he's at, he belongs in commercial area, think about the quality of life. If you're Bruce Harms, and you stand on your deck, and you look to the south, you see Mr. Monahan's operation. I find it very, very, very hard to believe that this does not adversely affect our property values. And I will also say to you that there's a pattern here, the attorney spoke repeatedly about how truck parts are not an issue, yet I go on the quick check, I see the guy with the sweatshirts. And then I also see vehicles all the time that have nothing to do with landscape. If you do approve this operation, I don't wanna be the one that calls the D E P, or goes to the township committee, or the planning board and complains, someone's going to have to monitor this. We have many landscapers, it's no hardship if we don't have another landscaper. I would also say that Mr. Monahan should have done his due diligence before he purchased the property, he didn't. And I'm closed by saying, just think about this, this is East Amwell, would you want Mr. Monahan in your backyard?
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Anyone else from the public? Come on up, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, can you, are you okay?
Yes.
I'm sorry, allergies, if I sound like a frog, I'm sorry, it's kinda bad there.
Tree season.
Yes.
It is.
I, uh, took a lot of notes, I'm gonna try to address points that were made in some coherent way. But I'm going to first start with exhibit forty-three. Mr. Monahan stated earlier that these statements are his, that they're true. Well, uh, I'm gonna demonstrate that, uh, key statements in exhibit forty-three are in fact false. And how am I gonna demonstrate that they're false? Well, Mr. Monahan told us that they're false. So let me start with the very first sentence in paragraph number one of exhibit forty-three. The commercial landscaping business use is limited to the storage of vehicles.
For the record, these are not statements, these are proposed conditions of a variance.
Um, is it okay if I complete without you interrupting? I know it's a strategy to try to break my stride to interrupt me, but I think that violates a whole post of ethics rules, et cetera, so please let me finish.
It's not unethical, for the record.
It is unethical to try to disrupt me when I'm trying to make a presentation, if you have questions or comments, you could make them when I'm finished.
Yeah, okay.
I'm gonna start again.
This is, just, I'm reading it, it's, it's from the variance condition, the, the statement's come later.
Okay, let me, I'll.
I'll let you go, I'm just, I'm.
The commercial landscaping business use is limited to the storage of vehicles, equipment, and materials, materials used for a commercial landscaping business, that's paragraph one. Let's go to paragraph twenty, which reinforces this, paragraph twenty says, aside from personal residential use, the property is used only to store vehicles, equipment, and materials necessary to service off-site customers of the landscaping business. Okay, now let's go through the rest of exhibit forty-three. Paragraph five refers to, and I quote, the landscaping business's hours of operation, so does paragraph twenty-two. That doesn't sound just like storage, landscaping business's operation, hours of operation, that's more than storage. Paragraphs twenty-one and twenty-two refer to employees coming and going from the property, that's more than storage. Paragraph twenty-three notes that there are fifteen to twenty parking spots, that's more than storage. Paragraph twenty-five states, basic vehicle maintenance and repairs are done in the pole barn, that's more than storage. Paragraph twenty-six says, there's a dumpster on site. And from my own observation, Mr. Monahan has offered for sale on the front lawn of his property, equipment that he presumably no longer needs, that's more than storage. The truth is that Mr. Monahan is using this property for much more than storage, he's using it to operate a commercial landscaping business. He's doing all aspects of the business on the property, other than cutting the lawns. This isn't storage, this isn't a variance to storage equipment for his landscaping business, he wants a variance to operate a landscaping business, all aspects of an operating landscaping business. Fuel storage, dumpsters, maintaining equipment, having employees going in and out, this is an active business. I bought my farm in two thousand and ten, my farm is located a very short distance from Mr. Monahan, literally a short walk. So I've seen that area when Fred Johnston was there, in fact, Fred Johnston farmed part. So I've seen that area when Fred Johnston was there. In fact, Fred Johnston farmed part of my farm for a while. You would never know, driving past the property before Mr. Monahan bought it, that Fred Johnston was doing anything there other than storing a few pieces of equipment. It was news to me that he was conducting a landscaping business out of that, and I've had my farm there for, well, fifteen years. I've been on that property. I went back there several times to meet with Mr. Johnston because he had to sign my farmland assessment forms. I never noticed an active landscaping business. I saw more farming equipment than anything else on the property. I went there to speak to the prior owners of the property when I was campaigning in two thousand and sixteen. Never, never had an inclination that he was operating a landscaping business out of that property. You look at that property today, there's no doubt, there's a lot going on on that property, a lot. It is way more intensive than what it was when Mr. Johnston was operating it. So why should we care about any of this? Well, I think Mr. Kirchner made some very good points, but I'd like to make a few others on a more mackerel level. As you know, I served on the Township Committee for six years. I was mayor for three terms. I served on this planning board for four years. Farmland Preservation Committee, Board of Health. I've been around the block in East Amwell. I'm going to make certain points that I don't think anyone will argue with about East Amwell Township. For decades, keeping East Amwell rural has been of paramount importance to the residents. I don't think anyone would dispute that. We have vigorously enforced our zoning ordinances. We greatly restrict commercial in East Amwell because of the potential impact it could have on the environment. In fact, if you look at the area where my farm is located and Mr. Monahan's property is located, we sit on an aquifer. We only had to drill a hundred and eighty feet on my property to hit water, and when we hit water, it was coming out so fast they couldn't even measure it. We sit on an aquifer. It's an environmentally sensitive area. It's zoned for residential, for farming, not for commercial. There's a reason why we greatly limit the areas in East Amwell that are zoned for commercial and even the types of commercial that can be conducted in those areas. East Amwell is an environmentally sensitive community, and the residents have fought to keep it rural. We also have zealously protected our zoning ordinances because we recognize that as a small town, we don't have the resources to try to enforce a host of rules. I guarantee you that if Mr. Monahan gets that variance, he's not going to stick to it. He's already violated a host of laws and ordinances, and his justification is, oh, I didn't know. The moment he gets that variance, he's going to continue to do just what he wants to do. And go ahead and try to enforce it. Go ahead and hire, try to open the money in the budget to hire lawyers to enforce it. That's why we don't even open the door crap for these sorts of things, because we recognize we don't have the resources to enforce. Why should we be giving Mr. Monahan a competitive advantage over other landscapers? We have other landscaping businesses in East Amwell. They don't operate their businesses out of their home. They rent places. Why are we going to give him a competitive advantage? And if we're going to give him a competitive advantage, what about other residents? What about people who want to service cars? They're not going to be any more impactful than Mr. Monahan. You can have a car service business and be no more impactful. You should have set hours, a limited number of employees, and you can allow that? Are you going to give variances for that? In fact, our service business likely wouldn't have as many vehicles sitting outside as his property. And let me tell you, when he knew you guys were coming to look at it, he cleaned it up, because it was worse, a lot worse, before he knew you, before you guys said you were coming out to look at it. The fact that Fred Johnston may have done something illegally for thirty years under the cover of darkness shouldn't be rewarded. That shouldn't be a justification for saying to someone, well, you can go ahead and keep doing it. I mean, I'm telling you, I bought my farm in two thousand and ten. I didn't even realize Fred Johnston was conducting a landscaping business. I knew he was storing things in there. I knew he was doing farming out of there, but I didn't even know it until we started hearing testimony here. And I go by that property all the time. I mean, it's literally how I, mainly how I ingress and egress out of East Amwell Township. The notion that somehow this helps farming, that's nonsensical. None of what he's doing helps farming in East Amwell. It's not going to promote farming in East Amwell. So using that as a justification for a variance is just nonsense. Look, the fact of the matter is, Mr. Monahan can conduct his business just like everybody else conducts their business. You rent a place in an area that is zoned for commercial, and you conduct your business out of that area. Theory. You open the door for this, you're opening Pandora's box, and that's just not what East Amwell is all about. The prior administration, the administration that was in between me and the current administration on the Township Committee, had a different view of East Amwell. They wanted to open the door to development. You saw what happened. They got voted out of office. In two years, they were all voted out of office, and the composition of this planning board changed from people who were supportive of development to what we have here. The residents of East Amwell don't want this. There's no justification for having a commercial landscaping business in a residential agriculture area. So please give this very careful consideration, and I appreciate you giving me the time to speak my piece. And sorry I sound like a frog.
I have one follow-up point here from Mr. Wolf. Mr. Wolf, you've looked at the entire application, correct?
I don't know what the entire application is, so I can't answer that.
You've seen Exhibit forty-two, which is from the tax assessor's record, which is a photograph showing trucks labeled with Mr. Johnson's landscaping business in front of the pole barn.
What I did see from the taxpayers' records is that there's nothing in the tax records...
Did you see this? That's the question I asked you. Did you see this photo? There's a photo showing commercially labeled landscaping businesses with Johnson written on it in large letters. So you're saying you walked past this property all the time, or drive past it, went there, campaigned there, and you never noticed that these types of vehicles were there?
No, never noticed them.
So you can't actually see what's going on in the back of the property?
I was to the back of the property at this place to have farmland assessment forms signed by Mr. Johnson. I never saw anything back there that led me to believe that he was conducting a commercial landscaping business. I did see farm equipment.
But you did not see these trucks that were labeled Johnson Landscaping Business?
No.
Okay.
I did not. But what I did see in the tax records, because I looked, by the way, and I'm glad you brought this up, there's nothing in the tax records that says this property is assessed commercial, by the way. If Fred Johnston was conducting a commercial business out of this property for thirty years, he should have been paying property tax on real estate that is used for commercial and residential. So was he skirting property tax for thirty years, and should we reward that? And I'll tell you, if I were buying this property and it were assessed solely residential and I wanted to use it for commercial, I certainly would have done my diligence before I bought the property. But if you'd like to know what I got out of the tax records, that's what I got out of the tax records. There's nothing in there that gives any indication that this was ever assessed as commercial real estate. Anything else from anybody? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Hi, forgive me, I don't recognize you. Have you been here before?
Yes, my name is Bruce Harms.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, you are here. I'm so, I'm sorry.
So you're still under oath.
You're still under oath. Okay, my apologies.
I want to clarify a few things. Everybody's comparing Fred to Mr. Monahan. I will tell you, having lived next to Fred for quite a few years, and now Mr. Monahan, Fred was a lot quieter. My biggest beef when we had this first conference was the noise. And that was mostly because of the parts business. Mr. Monahan has done a much better job at being quiet. He is still louder than Fred ever was. But Fred's trucks would leave first thing in the morning, and they would come back, and then there would be sounds the rest of the time. Mr. Monahan, of course, is doing some of his own things at the location. So there's a little more noise. I've talked to him about it. He understands that. I'd like to talk to him again about it. I'm hoping that if this goes through, it is, as has been stated, just a landscaping business. So that anybody who comes to purchase it after him will have the same qualification, as I understand it. Because that keeps the noise level down. As Mr. Wolf said, if an auto mechanic wanted to go in there, it has been a lot noisier than it is. I'm hoping Mr. Monahan cuts the noise level down a little more as time goes on.
Can you say more about this? When you say there's more noise, are you, I'm interested in...
Well, let me, let me, let me clarify. Fred used gasoline vehicles. He'd drive in and out. The worst I heard was the equipment rattling in the trailer. Mr. Monahan has several diesel vehicles. They make a lot more noise. I hear him drive his truck out on a regular basis. I hear the garbage truck come in. I heard the garbage truck come in Fred's, but it wasn't as often, I don't think. I hear the truck come in with, delivers the gas and oil. I hear Mr. Monahan's vehicles, because he has a couple of them that are diesel, run around there. Those kind of things. He does more maintenance or his own work at the location, which adds a little more noise. It is acceptable, but it is a bit more noise than Fred's. So I would like to say that I am okay with him getting the variant if you decided it is working. Okay?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Is there anything that would make you even more comfortable with it, like some additional plantings or some additional buffering?
Well, additional plantings and buffering takes time, too. I've talked to Mr. Monahan about, you know, when I look out my back window deck, as was already stated, you know, I see the building. I've seen it for Fred. Problem was, a tree that used to be blocking a lot of that view has come down. I put a willow there, but they take time to grow at height. And I need the tree to be about thirty or forty feet tall. It's right now about fifteen, maybe twenty at max. And it's barely even covering anything. So I have to wait in time. There used to be a row of tall, evergreen type trees that blocked the view about where the white item, the carport was, or maybe a little closer. He had removed that to put in that existing retaining wall. So I had a better view of it, which is less pleasing, but it is what it is. Okay? But I'd like to see more trees grow in that area to block the view, but it takes time. He has put three pine trees in a good place to block it, but it's going to take years, if not decades, before it blocks the view.
So perhaps additional buffering could be considered?
Additional buffering could be considered. I mean, less of the diesel vehicles running through only when necessary. Things like that would help with the noise.
And you wanted to make...
I also want to note that since we spoke last time, a lot of the vehicles and machines to be DOT compliant, they have to have backup alarms. I added switches so that when the guys are on the property at seven in the morning backing up to a trailer or backing out, they hit a switch and it turns it off. This way, you don't hear the alarm, because it bothers me standing them, standing there right next to hearing the backup alarms. They had switches where they turn them off.
Right.
So I've tried to do some...
Honestly, I've slept through most of the morning stuff. I don't hear them in the morning. Venture was on the other side of the house. It's the living area that's closest to it, and while we're awake, that's where I hear a lot of the noise and stuff.
I understand.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Anyone else have questions, man? Anyone else from the public? Come on up.
Frances Gavigan. I've been here for thirty years. I don't know if you need to testify.
I think you're still under oath, too, right?
Okay.
You've got sworn, did you get sworn in at the last meeting?
Multiple times.
Okay.
I don't know.
I don't know that she was for this particular hearing, if you want.
Oh, okay. Then do you swear that the testimony, or that you're about to give before this boards the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I would. Yes, I do. Twenty years ago, I was intimately involved in a right to farm hearing that was held by the SABC over a neighboring farm whose right to farm protection was being challenged and by a resident. And they wanted water to run uphill. I won't go there. But part of the argument that had to be defended was that stream that drains into, what is it, the north? It's into a very sensitive stream and watershed area. And my concern is that here you have diesel, and you have equipment, and you have fuel storage, and you have what sounds like an intensive level of activity. And I didn't notice that level of activity over the last thirty years, as I would go to and from Surgesville feeding rain. And things like that, being ten feet, fifteen feet uphill, going downhill to that intermittent stream, or whatever it is, however DEP drained it, that goes into a major watershed that, as I recall, was already challenged. That's one thing. When this first started and the neighbor was coming to the Township Committee, I went to the tax assessor records. And I looked through them, and I saw photographs of some trucks, and that they were taken by people that were doing assessments for reassessment of property. And I asked Mary Ann Boucher, what's the story with this? And I think there was a note on it somewhere that said, hey, this looks like commercial activity. Someone should look into this. That may or may not still be in the file, but I remember seeing it. And I just swore to tell the truth and everything like that. That, when I asked Mary Ann Boucher, who's retired, bless her soul, well, why didn't you follow that up? You know, to find out if somebody was skirting the rules. It wasn't their place or their job to do it. They didn't have the bandwidth. So there, I imagine it's not just East Amwell. I suspect it's all the other communities around here. That they don't go poking into things for the exercise until somebody makes a complaint, and then it happens. So you've got two things here. You've got a more intensive use. I don't know, there was a lot more soil disturbance the last time I looked at the plans. It sounds like stuff and gravel has been clawed back. But I've got a small farm. I've got tractors. And unfortunately, my tractors will tend to leak oil or hydraulic fluid or whatever out of the butt end of it. And so I put cardboard under it, or I store it inside, or I try not to do anything. And I'm not next to a stream of environmental thing. I have to agree with Mr. Wolf that I don't think you reward somebody for getting away with something for twenty-five years when there wasn't somebody going after an old local farmer, Mr. Johnson. When the property changed hands, the use intensified, and the scope intensified, and stuff was added here, stuff was added there. I don't know all the details of it. As a member of the public who has been here for thirty years and has heard all of the arguments and all of, you know, the tiki torches and everything else, anything that environmentally was questionable, I think it's an accurate description of the mood of East Amwell residents and the constituency and of the intention of the master plan that going back to 2010, I worked on when I was on the ag advisory and things like that. You know? It's a shame that Mr. Monahan didn't look before he left or figured he could keep on dealing. And then it got caught out mostly by the neighbor coming to multiple township committee meetings I was at and going on and demanding that something get done and things like that. So your challenge, I suspect, and I'm not anything like that, is the current level of use, if it was the first day and the first use, consistent with the master plan and the use of residential properties in the Amwell Valley? And I would proffer that it is. Sorry, but, you know, rent some commercial land to have all of your non-personal use, vroom, vroom, and go with that. And fuels and diesel and tanks on the property, stuff gets spilled. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Going once, going twice? That objection, we are closed to the public. Mr. Kyle.
Let me move back to the seat. See, come on, Steve.
I am cognizant of the time, but I also at this... But at this point, I want to hear what you have to say and I'm really interested in that stream.
So, I think Mr. Tykina summarized the criteria adequately. So the board has to find that both the positive and the negative criteria can be met in order to grant a D1 variance. So positive criteria, Mr. Tykina talked about the particular suitability of the site. I think he's making an argument that, you know, the improvements that are there, that have been there for an extended period of time, really kind of make it appropriate for the use. I mean, we do know that some form of this use has occurred on this property, you know, historically. So that's the first component of it. The second component of it is you have to be satisfied that there are purposes of the municipal land use law that would be promoted by the grant of this relief. And he offered some for you to consider. Negative criteria, not kind of diminishing the importance of the positive side, but the negative criteria is really the focus. That's where you're going to look at the impact of this relief on any adjacent property. So when it talks about substantial detriment to the public good, it talks about in the case law specifically the impact of properties that surround this. You know, we have a survey. We've seen many pictures of the property. You know, you've seen the condition Mr. Monahan has offered through the Exhibit 43. Conditions that the board could place on the application to help diminish some of those potential negative impacts. So I think you certainly have heard from members of the public tonight, some of whom live immediately in the area. That's testimony that the board can consider in terms of, you know, the potential for impact. And again, the term that's used in the statute is substantial. Finally, and probably most importantly, you have to demonstrate that this is not contrary to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. And there is a case, Medici v. BPR, where the court said in the case of a D1 variance for any use other than a residential use, you have to show that the grant of the relief is not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Proof that essentially has to reconcile the fact that the governing body has not allowed this or continue to not allow this to be a permitted use in this district. For a D1 variance, it's a very high burden. And Mr. Tykina provided you testimony related to that. So you want to consider the purposes of the Amwell Valley Agricultural District. Mr. Tykina ran through them. There's really eight. Is the board generally familiar with these purposes? Do you want me to read through them real quick just so you know what they are?
Very quickly. As late as it is.
Okay, I'll do it quickly. To encourage land use patterns and development practices which enhance township, county, and state efforts to retain farmland and protect and preserve agricultural activity within the township. Two, to protect and promote the continuation of farming in East Amwell Township where farming is a valuable component of the local economy. Three, to protect prime soils and soils of statewide importance for their long-term value as an essential natural resource in any agricultural or horticultural pursuit. Four, to permit limited, non-farm-related residential development in a location and manner that will be consistent with the continuation of farming. Five, to support the preservation of existing farm operations and limit conflicts between agricultural and non-agricultural uses by encouraging the separation of residential development from active farms. Six, to impose lot suitability requirements on residential lots in order to accommodate individual well and septic disposal systems which are required in the Amwell Valley Agricultural District. Seven, to implement the goals of the amended master plan for the Amwell Valley Agricultural District by protecting agricultural lands and promoting agriculture as a valuable component of the local economy. And eight, not related to this, but to provide an affordable housing overlay option at fixed densities that will satisfy the township's affordable housing obligation. There's more there, but this isn't really relevant to what the board's considering here. So in your analysis, you have to be satisfied that the grant of the relief is not inconsistent with the principles of that this district was founded on. And, you know, this is longstanding policy for the township. You know, this dates back, you know, many decades. I worked in Frank Banish's office when we defended this zoning with Hargear. So, you know, we know that the overarching theme of the master plan is really preservation of agriculture and preservation of rural character. So not only do you have to consider this, but you should also think about the general planning objectives that are expressed in the master plan. It's unfortunate, I couldn't find the 1998 master plan amendment that was specific. So in ninety-eight, there was a master plan reexamination report and a land use plan amendment that supported the creation of this district and the creation of the ten acre minimum lot size zone. Unfortunately, it's not available. So I can't really articulate what those goals were. I mean, some folks might know if you were here at that time, but that was quite a while ago. So those are really the things that you need to consider. The term substantial on the statute is significant. Any grant of relief for any use that's not permitted in a district is going to have some impact. Your question is, does it rise to the level of being substantial? So that's really what you have to consider with the grant of the relief.
Anyone have questions there? Is that stream of prime importance?
The, it's attributable to the third Ashanik River.
Okay, thank you.
And the D E P compliance map has a fifty-foot repairing buffer.
So it's not minor.
So it's not exceptional.
And the ditch, I think there's a ditch on the...
Upper area at the driveway where it crosses through. But that doesn't have, that doesn't show up on any blue line streams or anything.
Yeah, so it's not regulated. So obviously, when the D E P was out there, they weren't really even looking at that part of the property. They were primarily concerned with the rear portion.
Thank you. Sport, do you have anything more to add?
Yeah, I'll just make a brief closing statement before you deliberate. That's where we are, right?
Yep. It's late, but I think we all want to finish it so we don't have to...
I agree. I agree. Just very briefly, you know, circle back to the point that this business existed there for years. Mr. Monahan is willing to accept those conditions that will make you comfortable with this proposal. You have testimony that it was not a problem under Mr. Johnson. We do have photos that Mr. Johnson had commercially marked landscape trucks there. We do have correspondence in 2016. I don't know why there's a discrepancy in the early permits, but we did receive from the township copies of the early building permit acknowledging the landscaping business. The tax assessor knew it was there. So this whole concept of don't look at the application in front of you, look at what, one, maybe two people are asking you to fear this could be different than what's in front of you. Mr. Monahan has withstood a lot of accusations, ones that make your blood boil, where they want you to not decide the request that's in front of you, but to essentially have his motor fluids leaking like Miss Gavigan's and have, you know, all these terrible things happening. There was a concern about the mulch. He's willing to remove the mulch by way of example. There's got to be conditions. If this existed for all these years, if the complaint, if the concerns of Mr. Kirchner are that the wall is a problem, the wall with the site plan will have to conform. We're not asking for a variance for any walls. It will have to conform. If that shed needs to be in a different place, it will be moved. If the mulch needs to go, it will be removed. This whole idea that somehow Exhibit 43 contains misrepresentations because this paragraph says storage and that paragraph says hours of operation insults us all. It's very obvious in this one document that we're attempting to communicate the totality of what he's asking to do. You are a board that is trained and experienced in a specialized area, not a jury, to have theatrics and present it to you with all of this speculation about how there's somehow lies going on here. It's insulting what Mr. Wolf does. It's insulting. Mr. Monahan has a mortgage. He's not getting an unfair advantage. There are other businesses in this township that have, that are operating out of a residential property. He paid a price for this property with a mortgage with the understanding that there was already a landscaping business there. It was sold to him that way. This is not some big scheme. Yes, he could have hired me and he would have had better due diligence. He didn't. He didn't hire me. He hired a different attorney. He was told the use was permitted. And he, yes, would it have been great if he had asked for a zoning permit then? Yeah. Not everybody, especially when they're at this scale, thinks that they need to go and ask for a zoning permit for something that they're told there's already a zoning permit in the file. I'm asking you to not treat Mr. Monahan like he's lying to you. What he is asking for is in front of you. It existed for years and he is willing to accept the conditions that would make you comfortable in order to allow this property to have some degree of this landscaping use occurring on it respectfully. His whole situation is in your hands.
Anything else for them?
Just one thing. I just want to point out to the board. So the applicant has bifurcated this application. If the use variance were to be approved, they would come back for site plan. They've stipulated that they would do that within seventy-five days. The thing I want to point out is that when you bifurcate an application and they come back for site plan approval, you have to prove the negative criteria a second time when you come back for site plan. What that means is that, because you don't have a site plan in front of you. You've seen our photos representing, hey, we're just going to continue using it the same way that it's been used. If you're not satisfied at the end of that site plan application that the negative criteria continue to be met, then the use variance fails. So you do have a second bite at it at the site plan phase. The other thing, not that I'm suggesting you should feel this way, but there is case law that says if the board is not comfortable making a decision on the use variance where there's a lack of a site plan in front of you, that the issues are so intertwined that you need to have an understanding of that at the time you're approving the use variance, you can insist that a site plan application be submitted at the same time. I'm not suggesting you need to do that here, but that is an option that you have.
Is there anything you need to add? Should I open up the deliberation?
Well, I think that it's true that the business is not going to be exactly the same as it was. It's not. But they're asking for a variance, you know, and they've asked for a variance to permit continuation of the landscaping business and such variance exceptions or other relief as may be required. But there are other things that are, you know, seem to be part and parcel with this landscaping business that they're asking the board to approve. And those are in those conditions. I mean, it's going to include some parking. It's going to include, you know, hours of operation and there's going to be various storage. So it's before you, I think that you have the opportunity to, you can modify this, you know, these conditions to make it more clear. And if the applicant agrees, you know, then it's perfectly fine.
And Mr. Monahan would be willing, obviously, just to make sure it's clear, to accept additional conditions. If during your deliberation you identify a concern, welcome the opportunity to discuss what conditions would alleviate that concern. The fuel can go inside. For example, Mr. Monahan has volunteered that the fuel could be stored inside the pool barn.
Well, I think that, you know, a reasonable condition regarding fuel is to have it properly contained in a spill containment system somehow to make sure that, you know, spills do not occur. I mean, there's conditions that could be added to this. You know, your condition regarding environmental protection, I would want, the permits, I want to make sure that any approval was conditioned on obtaining all final approvals from them and supplying copies of all that to the township. I mean, I would add that to this. So there's things I would add, you know, and, but you have to decide on basically on the criteria that's been presented to you, you know, positive and negative criteria. And again, you can approve with conditions in order to help satisfy that negative criteria.
Anyone want to start, what you're thinking, what your questions are?
I could start, it's okay. I have no problem with Mr. Monahan's business. What my problem is, is pretty much environmental. It's a big problem with me. You know, there's a lot of vehicles there, fuels coming in and out. And it just, it makes me very uneasy because things do, even tensions, things can go wrong. And it's a sensitive area and I hate to see, and I've seen damage by fuels and everything. It's a big mess. It takes a lot to clean up and it takes a lot of money to clean it up. And it's never at where it was again. So that is my, that is my big problem with the whole thing. My only problem, basically.
My problem is, is that this is a residential piece of property. It has a house on it. It's on four point nine acres in a ten acre zone. So they already, they already have the benefit. And I don't know what he paid for it, but I assume that the, that he probably got a pretty good deal.
Is that relevant?
I don't know that it's relevant, other than counsel made the point that he has a mortgage and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. No. I think Exhibit 43, in terms of the conditions, is the death knell of this application. It says all of the things that he's doing. I mean, they pretty much concede that all these four pages of things that presently exist need to be corrected. And somebody's going to have to, who? Who is going to monitor this? And if he's allowed to do this, why shouldn't anybody else be allowed to do this? And it has nothing to do with protecting farmland and our master plan, everything we're doing. It's the antithesis of it. And I don't know, I don't know what the positives are. Quite frankly, I don't, other than positives to Mr. Monahan, I don't know what positives there are to this community by having... what positives there are to, to this community by having, uh, this, uh, whatever you wanna call it. Uh, but, but it's certainly, it's certainly not a, uh, certainly not doing anything to beautify our community. It's, you know, we have situations in our community, we can see them, where people store, store vehicles and, and they're eyesores. I'm sorry. There's, with the storage of, of plows and, and all of this, uh, are, do not, and now, and he took down trees that he said, you know, he's, he's gonna replace these trees, but he took them down. And, and in my recollection of the testimony, and, and I was that said that they were dead and that they, they weren't dead. We haven't, we, you know, we have given, uh, them every opportunity, hours and hours and hours and hours have been spent in order, in order to, to review this. And quite frankly, I don't, I don't, I don't think that this application has any merit whatsoever. I, I, in terms of its, its impact, everything is negative. I don't see, I don't see anything positive about this.
I think, I mean, pretty much what, what I heard, um, everybody who testified said that if this operation could be scaled back to the intensity that Fred Johnson employed, nobody would have an issue with it. And I think the problem is that the intensity clearly like was scaled way up, right, with the car parts. But I'm actually sympathetic to Mr. Monahan 'cause he's paid a tremendous price for that. I mean, all his professionals, our professionals, all these meetings, that's like a, 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 a tremendous cost. And if we could do up Exhibit forty-three to meet, I mean, you know, I, I work on a farm where we have five hundred gallons of diesel. It's in a containment vessel. You know, there's, there, all of these things are not all that different to an ag operation. And if, if we could scale this up to meet some of those concerns, it just, who created the problems? I'm sorry. I think he created the problems.
Well, it's absolutely like Fred Johnson created the problems because he created the expectation that this was okay.
Oh, oh.
Right? And everybody in this town was okay with it.
No, no. I, I disagree with you.
Let me hear from other people here, 'cause I can see, do you have any, thoughts and questions?
Yeah, just a comment. I think we, what is past, it's past. It wasn't legal. So we can't really go after and say, well, this is wasn't legal, but it happened for twenty-five years and, and unfortunately, you know, the new owner based his business on the assumption, you can assume, I mean, especially when you're basing your business that you're bred, right? That you're everyday bred. So you move to the new town, I guess the first thing you go and meet the officials. And if you have your business, you will go to zoning officer and so on, because you completely knew. You wanna get familiar with, you wanna know what to do, especially if you have your own business. I had my own business, so I'm speaking from experience. I would never have thought about the assuming something or, or base all my, you know, future business about someone who told me it's okay, because maybe it is not okay. And in, it, it is really unfortunately, and, and, uh, but the facts are facts. It's not permitted. And, and I agree, you know, um, with the statement that what, we have to defer to others now. So we're gonna grant this applicant and then someone else gonna come. How are we gonna review that? It, it, it's just to me, unfortunately, again, I repeat myself, but it's, uh, it doesn't fit. It doesn't fit in our, I guess, master plan. That's where we, uh, really people fought for so many years and I don't see unfortunate, can't repeat again, there's no positive criteria. I had a neighbor who moved last year and my rear yard, um, they have three sons and they bought three quads, two small one and one third bike. I have two sons. I know what boys like, right? But then they use them for fun. And I tell you, I pack my picnic and I go inside the house because the dust, the noise, and I can imagine with the equipment, maybe one car, but then we have, we're talking about heavy equipment, trailers. So I think, um, the neighbor who spoke is very kind neighbor and he, he, uh, willing to put up with quite a bit. I planned a lot to create a barrier on my rear yard. It's gonna take years. And the green hedges don't really eliminate the, the, the dust maybe partially, but definitely not the, um, noise. So it just, it doesn't fit.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Anyone else? I know I cut, um, yeah, okay.
Well, it, it just seems to me that, um, you know, it's, it's a matter of, you know, when you have neighbors and sometimes we like our neighbors and then sometimes somebody new moves in and we might not like them as much as we liked the previous neighbors. And I'm just wondering here, I mean, the business, there were businesses that operated at this property before Mr. Monahan moved in and, uh, you know, there seems to be a lot of proof that there were businesses and, and yes, our township had many opportunities. Um, when the proctors owned it, they, they had opportunities to see what was going on and yet nothing was done then. Um, so I think the bigger issue here is, do I like my new neighbor? Or, um, you know, I, I've got people who moved in next door to me and now they park like all seven of their big horse trailers right in view of, you know, what is my hayfield? It would be a nice view, but then at the edge of my hayfield, I have seven big horse trailers and, you know, we were trying to be neighborly. We asked them, hey, could you maybe park them around back? And they refused. And you know what? They've kept them just, you know, enough away from the property line that it's legal. Um, and it's something I've just sort of had to put up with. The dust is a concern though. I know, um, it's, it's not nice living next to somebody who's, you know, constantly using, um, four-wheelers. Um, I, I, I get, but you know what? The horse farm that's next to me, they create a lot of dust in their outdoor arena, um, and everybody complains about that as well. So I don't know what is worse. Um, and, and I think this really just boils down to, you know, we can bemoan the loss of the good neighbor that we had for so many years and now somebody new moves in and maybe they're not like our old neighbor and we kind of miss that. So, yeah, it's a hard call here.
Ms. DeWiler, is there an opportunity for me to just respond to a few things before we get too far ahead of them?
Sure. Let, let me say just a few things and I wanted to roll back to Jamal, 'cause I cut him off and I, I do wanna, um, I hear, I hear what you're saying loud and clear. And for me, um, I'm gonna go back to the, the master plan and what the uses and, um, what, you know, it's, it's a residential area with larger plots. Yes, farms make noise and farms smell and farms, um, you know, have diesel, but farms have a greater good. And we're not, we're not in that, in, in that situation where, you know, we're not, we're talk, we're not talking right to farms situation here. And so, and the fact that we would need to have this many conditions tells me that we're to, tells me that we're sort of shoehorning or making something work, which is, which is what you want to do, because I have a lot of sympathy from Mr. Monahan. It's a painful thing to say no, but I, I, I don't see a way of ma- managing through all these conditions and, you know, if we were to vote, yes, we want to, now we need to go back and work on, on the conditions, 'cause I think, first I wanna sort of take this in two steps. That, that alone is a concern. And then going back to sort of the, the detriment, the, um, the prime soil and that stream is a great concern to me. It re- it really is. And it's not, this property has a history where there was problems many, many years ago where people went to the D E P. So it's not even Mr. Monahan. It's, you know, you go back, was it in twenty sixteen, there were complaints and worries. So it's, that's not on you, but it's, it's, what it's showing me is that it's, it's not a seamless connection, you know, it's not seamlessly blending into the community the way we would like it to, to. And putting a commercial operation that is clearly not seamlessly blending into the community, as much as I would, would want to say, yes, I don't, I'm not, I'm not there even with these, with these, with these, um, I'm not yet there. I'll leave it at that. Jamal, if you wanted to add anymore, you're welcome to. I, I did cut you off 'cause I wanted to get around to everyone and then I will, I will circle back.
No, I, I mean, I, I think that that's right, really about, um, you know, everything's illegal. I'm sure you can find something on your neighbors and enforcement's discretionary. I mean, it's, it's kind of, uh, a fortunate situation.
I, 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 I wanna say that I do agree with you on that one. Um, I'm very mindful though of opening the door and saying, even if we have all these conditions and we, you know, I think, you know, Bruce, has, has, you know, Mr. Monahan has made a good attempt to, to get along with his, with his neighbor, um, as evidenced by the conversation we heard from Bruce, but even that is not, it's, there's still noise. So I, I, they, this is where I'm, I'm just, I can't, I can't get there. I want to, but I, so far, um, so that's just where, where I sit. Um, I wanna turn it back to you.
Well, you know, there were, I just, when it comes to the technical evaluation of variance, um, you know, there's stuff that's relevant and there's stuff that's not relevant and it's not to dismiss anything, but the experience that people might have had with dust on their own properties because of res- uh, residentially used ATVs for hobbies is not relevant to this application because there's been no testimony about riding ATVs on this property, aside from loading them on a truck. There's been no testimony about dust emanating from this property. I get concerned when I hear about, um, a continuing theme that I've actually experienced before this board more than any other one I've ever appeared before, which is, well, what about this terrible thing that might happen? Or I had this terrible experience related to this thing over at this other place. And so I'm gonna assume that that's what's happening here and on those grounds, it's just too much for me. I don't think that is appropriate at all. I think it's actually appealable conduct.
Would you?
And, go ahead.
I, I do have a question for that.
Yeah.
Would you think, is it possible that because of the sort of, for lack of a better word, the motto of, of Easthamwell, to keep it rural, that you're hearing that more here? And I, you know, because that is our overarching, if you look at our master plan, keeping it rural, keeping it, you know, residential, is that why you might be hearing that more here?
I don't think at all. In fact, what I'm hearing is complaint about farmers' horse trailers and complaint about a farm that has ATVs and complaint about the dust that's coming off the farm and assuming that that's what Mr. Monahan's gonna have. I, I don't. And I actually do more farm work than any other kind of land use. No, that, that is not what I believe I'm hearing here, but I appreciate the question very much. Um, so that very much concerns me. The other thing that I've heard, which makes me question if this is being deliberated with a true understanding of the variance standard, I'm genuinely concerned about that, because a variance has to be uniquely suited to the property. It's being treated like this is changing your zoning to allow this on any property. A variance has to be uniquely suited to this property. Allowing it here is not allowing it everywhere. The other thing I'm hearing is, oh my gosh, there's so many conditions. I put pen to paper, fingers to a keyboard, and listened, I actually had my paralegal listen to the whole of Robert's testimony and type it out and I turned it into what he represented to the board, because in every single application, the testimony of the applicant and the representations they made are inherent conditions in the approval. If you had an applicant tell you that, you know, these three things are gonna happen and it's in the record and then you give them a variance and then you find we aren't doing those things, they're violating the conditions, presumed conditions. So I memorialize it to writing in order to help that be clear in the record, so there would never have to be that dispute going forward, not because there are so many conditions. Whenever you hear a variance, everything that's been discussed is an inherent condition. I wish now I had written these things in shorter sentences, because then it wouldn't be perceived to be so many conditions. But the reality is we're just trying to make sure that it's very clear, unequivocally clear going forward. So I just wanna encourage this board to consider the relevant variance standards. Consider the relevant testimony, not your own bad experiences. Please consider the actual facts in this record.
Do, have you heard of this? Because I need to sort of, do you wanna go through the conditions? Do you wanna see where the answer stands? And then I go back over the conditions if it's approved.
Well, you've, um, heard from some people already about how they, I don't know, take a poll?
Yeah.
Take a poll and then talk about whether or not you wanna go through conditions, like you see if people, you know, are willing to go with conditions.
Okay.
I, I will agree with, um, uh, Ms. Voight to the, with the extent that variances are based on characteristics unique to a particular, you know, ca- application. Each property is considered unique, so, um, she, you know, her, she talked about her client's property and the unique characteristics of that. And, uh, it's true that just because you, you know, granted a D variance in one, um, situation doesn't mean it's gonna now apply to every other piece of property, because each piece of property is unique, you know? And so do the, these particular s- characteristics here, they're not gonna necessarily apply to, you know, another piece of property. Just the only thing I wanna say about that.
So how do you think about that in terms of, how do you think about that in terms of, okay, we approved this and a landscape business is now allowed in that property? Which of these conditions then apply? And then Mr. Monahan sells the business, sells the property, not the business, in ten years. Which of these conditions, how does that force?
Well, it variance runs with the land, so this is, you know... Yeah, they're, they're, they've got the resolution and they, and if they're gonna now vary that, you know, then they got, have to come back to the board.
Yeah, the successor is bound by the conditions.
Shall I take a poll and see where we are and then if we're leaning, if we're leaning yes, we'll go back over the variances or if it's a clear no, we'll, we'll then take a vote? Should we do that? Okay, Mr. Kanachi, where are you standing?
Uh, I think, uh, I have, I have listened to testimony. I think that, um, when the, if Mr. Monahan has a right and he has damages, he ought to seek them against people who made misrepresentation intentions. I think that, uh, we're not here, we're not here to, we're here to dispense, we're here to, to follow the, um, master plan, uh, what? What the intent, what the intent of the master plan was, what the intent of Tenny presumed, what the intent of preserving farmland. I see none of this. To me, to me, there would need to be some demonstration of some benefits to the community. I think, I, as, as I see Exhibit forty-three, it, it, Mr. Monahan has got caught doing a whole bunch of things and now, and now wants to say, I'm sorry and I, I won't do any of these things that, and, uh...
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move, so I kinda wanna get, I'm gonna make, put you on the spot. Yes or no? How are you leaning? Giving a variance with conditions or not giving a variance?
Uh, I'm for giving a variance with conditions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Standis?
I'm leaning no.
Yeah.
Jamal?
I give a variance with conditions.
And I would read no. So I've got five to two. So it doesn't seem like we'd take, need to take time to hammer up the condition. We should just take a vote.
Okay.
I think we do. May I have a motion, please? We're gonna take a, now we're gonna take... We're going to take a, now we're going to take a formal vote on this, on this application. I need a motion, either to approve, disapprove, I need a second.
Okay, I make a motion.
Okay, what's your motion?
For the approval?
For the approval?
Or disapproval, I'm sorry.
Depends how you say it.
For us, for us to vote, right?
Yeah, you want to make a motion to deny the variance or to approve the variance? And if you, and if we approve it, we'll go back and get the conditions. A motion to approve, a motion to deny?
Motion to deny?
Okay, may I have a second? Okay, so I have a motion to deny this variance request with a second from Mr. Kadnachi.
Just to be clear, if you're voting yes, you're voting in favor of deny.
Oh, that's why, okay. So a motion is to deny the variance. Now I understand why you were, why, yes, she was asking, and I, okay.
A lot of times people will make a motion to approve, and then everybody's supposed to stop, because it's easier to...
Shall we turn it all around?
Fine, I just wanted to clarify, so...
Okay, so a yes is to deny.
Correct.
Okay, so a motion is to deny this variance, and you please take the roll.
Mr. Kadri? Mr. Kadnachi?
Yes.
Ms. Wiggum?
Yes.
Mr. McGovern?
Yes.
Ms. Teresi?
Yes.
Ms. Hussein?
No.
And Chairperson Dedwiler?
Yes. So the motion to deny the variance is adopted. It is 15:00 at night, I'm going to look on the agenda. We have to deal with the adjournment. Okay, so we have an adjournment for Jersey Powersports. So Jersey Powersports will be adjourned to May 20th, which is the next, the next planning meeting.
Their experts aren't available.
We do know that, but we can't find another date yet, so we will need to adjourn it and find another... Yes, thank you. Okay, so let's set that for the rest of the day. And I wanted to say that, that the applicant is not required to renotice for May 20th, because the notice was adequate for jurisdiction, so, okay. And I'm going to skip the rest, Chairman's prerogative, may I have a motion to adjourn? Anyone against adjourned, all in favor, here are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for staying this late, I appreciate it. It was a long one.
Thank you.
This is meant for Mary.
Yep. Thank you, let me, I should have moved that, we had that recess, I could have moved it for you. That's why you had so many, so many papers in front of you.
The ones that you had placed here were sufficient.